Two, one.
Good evening. I'm just going to admit anyone left in the waiting room. And say hello. So, good evening. This is the October fifteenth City Council meeting. I'm Jeanne Louis Shara, I'm the Council President, and I'll be presiding this evening. This meeting and all who are participating with it, with us on it, with us on Zoom, will be audio and video recorded. We will begin this evening with public comment as we always do. We have two public hearings this evening on the agenda, right after public comments. So if you're on Zoom with us for one of those, that's the administrative order pertaining to the Public Shade Tree Commission and the poll petition for Beacon Street. If you're here for those, those hearings will begin soon. And that would be when you would comment on those. But right now, this is the more general public comment time, which is for other issues and needn't be on the agenda, anything that you want to talk to us about. So, if you know that you wish to make a public comment, please use the raise hand feature. To raise your hand, you click on Participants, which is in the horizontal menu bar at the bottom of the screen. A column will open to the, usually to the right. And the raise hand feature is at the bottom of that column. If you're calling in by phone, you can raise your hand by hitting star nine. If you're having trouble raising your hand, you may use the chat feature to send a message to me. I will do my best to monitor that for those people who are having technical difficulties. That's the only purpose for which we will use that function, and it will only be used during public comment. I will unmute each raised hand, one by one, and I'll ask if you'd like to comment. When you begin, please state your name and your city or town for the public record. To ensure everyone has equal opportunity to speak, we ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. After three minutes, I will ask that you please finish your sentence. According to council rules, we do not respond during public comment, as it is your time to speak. So while your comment should be directed to the council, you'll understand when we don't respond. Due to the size of the meeting and that it's public and how Zoom works, all participants will need to be muted until called upon. I also ask that all but the council turn off your video until called upon, as comments are directed to the council, and only the person recognized has the floor. We will do our best to act quickly if someone is clearly acting in a way that's inappropriate, deploying profanity, slurs, or displaying something outside of what one would expect in council meetings. And I'll remove anyone that needs to be removed from the meeting. The recording of this meeting will be available at Northampton Open Media's Government Video Archive channel on YouTube, and I thank them as always for that access. I'll remind people, we're always happy to receive comments by email, and they are equally a part of the public record, so please email us at citycouncil@northhamptonma.gov. And we are going to start with public comment. I'm going to start with Hildegard, who is on the phone. So Hildegard, the floor is yours.
Yes. This is Hildegard Friedman, in Northampton. I am not bringing you music for victims of systemic racism today. I am not bringing you Berlin II today. I am bringing you methodology for a more efficient and economic police force. Although similar methodology was used in an anti-gang program, awarding Pittsfield a winner of $5 million, spread out over 10 years. It can most decidedly be used today without the grant in Northampton. Mayor Bianchi, in the late 2015s, was readying himself to leave office. This is a total, total game changer. The police get in the door, but they bring another person, a lay individual. That's right. You hear again and again, as I have, from police I have worked with. I can't get in the door. I just heard it in September at Cahill, from Officer Beaver. The police are able to approach a person in his domicile with, who has had anything to do with drugs ever, not just an arrest, a prison sentence, a conviction. They bring another person. And before I continue, this is where Bill Dwight comes in. Let me remind you that I stood here before the Northampton City Council, live in 2017, not virtually. I stood before William Dwight, President, before Mayor Nakwitz announcing this in an effort to get something similar for Northampton. I had been in touch with Adam Hines, now a legislator, Adam Hines from Pittsfield. I had been regularly in touch with Officer Hunt of the Pittsfield Police, with whom in 2015 and 16, I brought into a leading fraud case, which I led with Springfield FBI Director Rob Lewis. And the fraud case, we won. The business was closed. I put Officer Hunt then in touch with your captain, John Cotlidge. And Cotlidge then contacted the grant writer. Cotlidge shook my hands at the police station. You can't do this in three minutes, but this is much, I will do it, continue in future meetings. This is much more mundane than music. Please consider doing it. And Jim Nash has the article, which I gave him recently, from the Berkshire Courier, specifically describing this grant, December 18th, 2015. Thank you.
Thank you. Well timed. That is just about three minutes. Thank you, Hildegard. Okay. Next, we have Celeste Palladino.
Hi there. Celeste Palladino, Florence, Mass. I suppose my comment is, as it relates to the significant, well, okay, the shade, Public Shade Tree Commission, or whatever might be renamed.
For one quick second?
Yes.
If you're here to speak to the public hearing, that's coming up next. So, I mean, you're welcome to make, you're welcome to comment now, but it won't be part of the record for the public hearing.
Okay, so.
Here to speak to. Right after public comment, we'll be moving on to the public hearing.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone else for public comment who's not here for one of the two public hearings that we're having, potentially momentarily? Okay, give it one more second. Again, raise your hand using the feature, or send me a chat. Okay, I think that is it for public comment. That's not for a hearing. So, we will convene the meeting. Laura, will you please call the roll?
Counselor Dwight.
Oh, I'm here.
Counselor Foster.
Here.
Counselor Jarrett.
Here.
Counselor Labarge.
Here.
Counselor Maori.
Here.
Counselor Nash.
Here.
Counselor Quinlan.
Here.
Counselor Shara.
Here.
And Counselor Shora.
Here.
Here.
Counselor Maori. You have a quorum.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Nash.
Well, as I said, we're going to launch right into the public hearings. First up, we have a public hearing on the administrative order. This is in accordance with the amendments we can start this hearing in accordance with Section 61 of the Northampton City Council. As I said, we're going to launch right into the public hearings. First up, we have a public hearing on the administrative, considering proposed amendments. This is in accordance with the amendments we can start this hearing in accordance with Section 61 of the Northampton City Council. As I said, we're going to launch right into the public hearings. First up, we have a public hearing on the administrative, considering proposed amendments. This is in accordance with the amendments we can start this hearing in accordance with Section 61 of the Northampton City Council. As I said, we're going to launch right into the public hearings. First up, we have a public hearing on the administrative, considering proposed amendments. This is in accordance with the amendments we can start this hearing in accordance with Section 61 of the Northampton City Council. As I said, we're going to launch right into the public hearings. First up, we have a public hearing on the administrative, considering proposed amendments. This is in accordance with the amendments we can start this hearing in accordance with Section 61 of the Northampton City Council. As I said, we're going to launch right into the public hearings. First up, we have a public hearing on the administrative, considering proposed amendments. This is in accordance with the amendments we can start this hearing in accordance with Section 61 of the Northampton City Council. As I said, we're going to launch right into the public hearings. First up, we have a public hearing on the administrative, considering proposed amendments. This is in accordance with the amendments we can start this hearing in accordance with Section 61 of the Northampton City Council. As I said, we're going to launch right into the public hearings. First up, we have a public hearing on the administrative, considering proposed amendments. This is in accordance with the amendments we can start this hearing in accordance with Section 61 of the Northampton City Council. As I said, we're going to launch right into the public hearings. First up, we have a public hearing on the administrative, considering proposed amendments. This is in accordance with the amendments we can start this hearing in accordance with Section 61 of the Northampton City Council. As I said, we're going to launch right into the public hearings. First up, we have a public hearing on the administrative, considering proposed amendments. This is in accordance with the amendments we can start this hearing in accordance with Section 61 of the Northampton City Council. As I said, we're going to launch right into the public hearings. First up, we have a public hearing on the administrative, considering proposed amendments. This is in accordance with the amendments we can start this hearing in accordance with Section 61 of the Northampton City Council.
Are regulatory, some are quasi-judicial, adjudigatory, meaning that some of the bodies are independent and have independent actual decision-making authority, and in some cases, like the Planning Board or the License Commission of the Board of Health, you know, have, have specific statutory authority that's laid out by mass general law, that we have a series of advisory bodies that we've created over time, which don't have any sort of statutory authority, you know, under state law, but we feel have been important in providing advice on policies related to different, to different subject matter area. The two that I referenced in my order were the Energy and Sustainability Commission and the, and the Transportation and Parking Commission, which are actually a, a sort of a blended committee that combined both city staff, who are sort of the key experts in, in various subject matter, as well as city residents, and in some cases, actually, city councillors as well, and, or elected officials, as the administrative order reads. And these bodies sort of work collaboratively to provide, you know, study issues, provide policy recommendations, in some case, study ordinances that are referred to them, and make recommendations. You may recall that last, at the end of last year, I submitted an administrative order regarding the two aforementioned multiple-member advisory bodies, the TPC and NESC. And as part of that order, we sort of formalized that the, the city staff, a city staffer on the commission would be sort of, would be the ex officio chair, to sort of help lead the meeting and make agendas and do all of those kinds of things related to running the meeting. And that was adopted. So, fast forward, we have the Public Shade Tree Commission, which has evolved over time, much like the Transportation and Parking Commission evolved over time. It used to be this bifurcated, there was a traffic committee, there was a parking committee, there's a police committee. Often, it was completely divorced from actual city departments. Similarly, there was, there was once an energy committee, an energy resources committee that was made up of all residents. And again, it was sort of separated from the day-to-day work of advancing the city's work around energy and energy and sustainability. So, in much that same vein, the former Tree Commission, back when the first administrative order was issued after the charter change, we eliminated what was called the Tree Committee, which was actually created by the Board of Public Works. Interestingly, it actually did have a DPW member on it, although it was not the Tree Warden, because we didn't have a Tree Warden, who was actually a, one of the city's engineers. Similarly, it was sort of not really well-aligned with the actual tree work of the city, and we didn't actually have someone who was a point person for tree work. So, part of that original administrative order, creating the Public Shade Tree Commission, created the Public Shade Tree Commission, but also created a city staffer who was the Tree Warden, actually a DPW staff person, who was a certified arborist, who served as the city's Tree Warden, which does have a statutory authority under mass general law, relative to our public shade trees. The two have worked really well together in advancing the, our renewed mission to support our public shade tree canopy. Obviously, the Public Shade Tree Commission, one of its goals is, is public education, and as well as helping work on developing policies and studying ordinances that get referred to it, and, and has done a lot of great work in terms of increasing the city's tree canopy, working with the Tree Warden, working with Tree Northampton, and the Army of Volunteers that they've, that they've energized. And so, at this point, we are at a point where we were looking at the, the name of the committee and changing the name of the committee. And so, this, this order would change the name of the committee to sort of expand it beyond just the Public Shade Tree, which again, is a really defined thing under mass general law, which is actually under the jurisdiction of the Tree Warden more directly, and just expanding it to the urban, urban Tree Commission, that would really be looking at our entire tree canopy for the city, and, and both, you know, private and public, and sort of taking that more holistic look, which is what the commission's been doing anyway. So, in many ways, it just is renaming the commission to better describe what it does. At the same time, the order would align this commission with those other two advisory commissions by, by putting our subject matter expert actually on the commission, that's our Tree Warden, and, and making them the ex officio chair. Much like our Director of Planning and Sustainability is the ex officio chair of the Energy and Sustainability Commission, and our Director of Public Works is the ex officio chair of the Transportation and Parking Commission. And so, that's the, that's the purpose of this, is to align it. It's something that, an idea that was brought forward to me from DPW and the Tree Warden. I know there's been discussion of it among the, the Public Shade Tree Commission, and, and I'm putting it forward to you and seeking your approval as sort of the next stage in the evolution of this important advisory committee, and aligning it with our other key advisory committees.
Thank you. So, per our rules, next, we ask if there are other proponents, people who are speaking in favor of these changes. So, if there are other, other people who are speaking, so I see one hand going up. So, yes, please go ahead and raise your hands if you're a proponent of this change, or. I don't, you know, I know that the DPW directors here, Mayor Nakwitz, I don't know if the plan was to have her speak to it, but I'll have, I'll go to Susan Loftus, who has her hand raised. Susan?
Hi there. Thank you very much, and thank you to, to the commission. And I am a proponent of this change. I think having a professional, highly-expert staff person leading the commission is a positive. I did reach out to commissioners with, to councillors with my thoughts on this in great detail. I want to, I want to add that I talked, other groups reach out to Tree Northampton, to the commission, and to the Tree Warden as well, from other communities. And what I hear over and over again, the single largest impediment to making the kind of movement we've made here in Northampton to revitalize our canopy, is, and involving a lot of different citizens in support of this, which helps our whole government be in support of trees on many levels, from ordinance and policy to funding. I think that that's a really important thing, to have a lot of people involved. And what they, what they, their biggest impediment is, their Tree Warden and their, or their, and/or their DPW won't even really work with them. There isn't a way to get involved. And this really puts in our city charter that our Tree Warden is expected to be involved. And I think having the Tree Warden working with the volunteer commissioners gives us a better voice, a direct voice. It's our best chance of, of reaching for the commission to reach the DPW, which is absolutely critical in all of this. Without DPW support, we can't really move forward on policy, and we certainly can't move forward on all of our projects, and certainly not community involvement. And that's where I'm coming from. I think it's a positive change, or support it. It's, we've done an awful lot. We've won awards for how well we collaborate as a community. The commission, the DPW, and our independent citizens group, Tree Northampton. And we're making great strides, and we're moving fast. And I think that's really important in climate crisis, is that we move forward, and we really raise awareness, and get community support, and have tangible evidence of what we're doing. If you go around the city, you're going to see trees all over. And that's, that's why we're winning awards as well, not only because we collaborate, but it all works together in a piece. And again, having a highly-trained tree professional right in the middle, I think is a positive thing. I don't think it's going to take our voice away. We're an energized commission, and we speak up, and we will speak up in the future if we ever didn't have, if our expectations weren't met, you'd be sure to hear from us. The mayor would be sure to hear from us. So, I'll leave it at that. And again, I want to thank you, and for all of your support of the tree program, and very much. I'm finished with my comment.
Thank you for sharing those thoughts, and thank you for your work on behalf of the city. Are there other proponents, or other people that are speaking in favor of these changes? I see Celeste's hand is up.
Celeste? Yes, thank you. So, I suppose I'm fairly neutral on the idea of whether the Tree Warden should formally join or not, but I really appreciate the idea of kind of re-envisioning or broadening the scope of the commission to not just examine trees on city-owned property, but kind of the, the whole ecosystem and the whole, the canopy throughout the committee, especially as it might relate to taking a second look at, at ordinances, like the significant tree ordinance, with increasing infill development, such that I understand it's key that it not impede, you know, folks being able to add additions to their homes and everything, but ways that we might look at it with fresh eyes to balance developer and contractor's rights with the existing green space and wildlife that those trees provide. So, I guess, avoid both, a voice in support of kind of broadening the mission of the commission to examine trees, not just on public property.
Thank you for sharing this. That's before you mute. Could you, can I ask you to unmute? Could you state your, your name and your city or town for the record, please?
Yes, Celeste Palladino, Florence, Mass.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Other proponents, people speaking in favor of the changes of this administrative order? If any people who are just joining us. So, first, we have proponents, and then we go to opponents. If you'd like to speak, if you could use the raise hand feature, which is in your participant bar, if you click on Participants, it opens up a participant bar, and the raise hand feature's now at the bottom of that. Or you can, you can use the chat and tell me if you're having issue, or if your camera's on and you want to speak, and, and I can see you, and you physically raise your hand, I will try and see everyone that I can. But the raise hand feature is really the easiest way for me to know if you want to speak. Okay, seeing no other raised hands, I will ask for, oh, Robert, or, Robert? Can you unmute?
I'm unmuted now, so here I am.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Robert, Rob Postel, and I live in Northampton. I've been on the Public Shade Tree Commission since its inception. And before that, I started what became Tree Northampton, and I was one of the founders of it. So, I've been planting trees on the streets of Northampton for eight years, and have planted a lot, a lot of trees. Most of the trees on the streets have gone through my hands in one way or another. And I really strongly back the proposal, because I, I have seen that having the professional advice and guidance is very important at all stages. So, for both Tree Northampton, we get advice from the Tree Warden, but also within the council. The council really depends on the Tree Warden to help it understand the issues. And further, having the Tree Warden then represent, and I think Sue touched on this, represent the, the directives or the, or the, we're, we're an advisory committee, so our advice, and having the Tree Warden integrate the advice in, into the whole hierarchy of the city. So, meeting with other commissioners from other, other departments, because we need to work with all of the DPW, the sustainability people, quite a few other departments, parking, it's kind of vast, the amount of integration that's needed in order to actually get trees. So, having Rich, or the Tree Warden, I should say, be chair, I think would allow the integration of the tree project, further integration of the tree project into the whole city. That's pretty much all I have to say, very much in support. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing those thoughts, and thank you for your work on the tree commission. Um, okay, so, if there are no other, I don't see any other raised hands for proponents, then opponents or people speaking who are not in favor of the administrative order, if you could raise your hand again, the participant bar at the bottom, if you click on that and open up the participant screen, then at the bottom of that, there should be a raise hand feature. If you're having trouble with that, feel free to just send me a chat, or use your video and show me. I see Lily Lombard. Lily, there you are. You're still muted. There you go.
Okay, there we go. Hi, everybody. How are you doing tonight? Thanks for being here and discussing this. I want to make a couple of things clear at first. One is that I know the way these administrative orders work, it's a, it's a, it's an up or down vote by the council. It's not like you can pick and choose pieces of it and say you want to support those and not others. And so, for that reason, I have to be, I have to be more absolute than I would normally be, because there are actually aspects of this administrative order that I, I like, namely, the, the name change, which was proposed and forwarded by the, the commission itself. So, let me introduce myself first. I served for two terms on the Public Shade Tree Commission. from the inception and I was chair the entire time. My second term ended in late June and I, I saw that as a good an opportunity to, you know, step out of the way and let things that, that get underway, do what they do, which is start running on their own momentum. So I, I, the thing that I want to make clear at first is that my opinion is not about the current staff or commissioners or elected officials who I really respect and worked very successfully with. This is about subtle but significant structural change in our city government. And a power shift that underlies that change that I, that causes me to ultimately lend my opposition to this proposal. So I guess I would characterize the mayor's proposal with regard to making the tree warden ex officio chair of the tree commission in two ways. One is really a solution looking for a problem. We have what Sue and Rob both described as a very highly effective, award-winning commission. It's already got an unbroken collaborative relationship with the tree warden, the Department of Public Works, the mayor, citizen volunteers, state and regional partners. It's written successful and competitive grants that have allowed us to inventory all our trees. Plant in areas of environmental justice. Plant over a thousand trees, organize elaborate Arbor Day events. Provide important input into city ordinances and master plans. It meets twice monthly and is quite frankly, the hardest working commission that I've ever witnessed or served on. So it's working. It's working very well. And this proposed, unlike the proposed name change, the proposed structural change was not something the tree commission even discussed in an open meeting, let alone initiated before the mayor drafted the change and put it before you as city council. So there was no, no dialogue about this with the commission prior to forwarding this. And I, I do know because they have spoken with me directly and I know they've spoken with their councilors that three of the six current commissioners have communicated that they oppose this structural change. So the mayor talked about the restructuring in 2019 of the Energy and Sustainability Commission and the Transportation Parking Commission. But the rationale for doing that, for doing those two, which incidentally I, I did oppose as well. But his rationale was very, was different than what he's bringing forward now. And actually, I'm not quite sure why he is bringing forward that, except for that he is continuing a trend. But there's certainly no confusion of legislative versus executive turf or roles on this all-citizen volunteer commission. So that, that's not it. And and then, and it's certainly not, as he also mentioned during that 2019 meeting where you all deliberated and voted on this. He's not modeling it after other, other commissions around the state that have done similar things. I reached out to an ally in, in the Department of Conservation and Resources, sorry. Conservation Recreation, Molly Freilisher. She is our urban and community forester. What she does is basically help tree committees all around the state get started and give them early support. And I asked her if she knew whether there were any other such committees around the state that were structured so that the tree warden was ex officio chair. And she said, no, she doesn't know of any. She does know of tree commissioners serving on commissions, being actual ex officio members of the commission. And that is not something I'm, I'm opposed to at all. But that's not what's before us. What's before us is to make the tree warden permanent chair. And that is, that does not exist anywhere in the state as far as Molly knows. And Molly pretty much holds every tree commission in her hands throughout the state. So she, she would know. She is the authoritative source. And, you know, to, to the point that some people feel that the chair needs to be a tree professional, I, I would disagree with that. I think that what a chair needs to be is a good chair. They need to have strong leadership and teamwork skills. They need to run a good meeting. They need to be able to help the commission synthesize and distill discussion points and move from discussion to goals to actions. They need to have good oral and written communication skills with municipal government, other commissions, the public. And they need the ability to, to have the, the ability to guard the mission. So to avoid rabbit holes that aren't really getting you anywhere, to keep a 30,000-foot view of what your goals are and to make sure that you're always coming back to the mission. I, I think that because this is a, a multi, multi-member body, you can have skills in an array of skills complement each other on the tree commission. But I, I strongly feel that that is not a requisite for being chair of the tree commission. So, so that's my first point is that I feel like it's a solution that is a, is a problem, a solution looking for a problem. The other is, in my view, it is a concerning trend toward more executive control of our city commissions. And, you know, the mayor, the mayor did say as much that he's, he's making the tree warden ex officio chair to align it with the administrative orders, changing the other commissions back in 2019. And I guess a question I would have for you of the council is that I hope you will ask the, the mayor what other advisory commissions will be similarly restructured? I mean, are we, the youth commission, the, the human rights commission? And why? Like what, what is the advantage? And, and to that point, I would argue that executive control does not equal executive effectiveness. So the, the staff, having a staff member as chair. And I think, I hope folks would agree that there is implicit disproportionate power just by virtue of a position of chair. You know, a chair can be as, you know, team-minded and accommodating as possible, but there are just aspects of a chair, chair's role. Spokesperson, setter of agenda, the, leading the meeting, moving it forward. And when you have a staff person as chair, you risk steering ideas and proposals to what the chair thinks that the mayor, their employer would approve. And that is inevitable because there, there's an obvious allegiance of, of a staff person to their employer. I mean, that is indisputable. And, and so when you have that, it, it may be subtle, but you have a subtle risk of the commission becoming more of an echo chamber rather than a kind of a vibrant cauldron for advice, for cutting-edge advice. I would also argue that restructuring it this way is inconsistent with the original intent during the formation of the Public Shade Tree Commission. I just want to read you something. There was in 2014, the mayor provided a, what was called a transmittal letter to the legislature of the administrative code that would create the Public Shade Tree Commission. And it said, "The tree committee has been renamed the Public Shade Tree Commission to better reflect both state terminology and its independent role advising our tree warden, perens, a DPW position also created by this code, and the mayor on the preservation and expansion of our city's shade tree canopy." So he highlighted its independent role advising the tree, the tree warden and the mayor. I just have, I just have one more point. I just want to talk a little bit about commissions because you know, I think commissions don't underestimate their importance in being entry points for citizen engagement. You know, they, it's true. This is just an advisory committee. It can't make any decisions. But in a healthy democracy, to be able to provide unencumbered, data-driven advice, that's a rare currency. I mean, think about what's happening at, at the level of our federal government with the CDC being, being encumbered and, and having its, its data-driven advice thwarted. You know, the commissions are called upon to sponsor ordinances. So they bring data to, to these ordinances to they're, they're called to input into larger city plans. They're called to leverage their voice sometimes to stop the progression of bad policy or bad planning. And I, you know, I have two, two examples of that that I want to bring to you. And one is when I was founding, this was in the early days before I was founding Grow Food Northampton, when we were trying to put the brakes on the city fast-tracking the purchase of the Bean Aller, back then it was just the Bean Farm to create soccer fields. It was the Agricultural Commission and the Community Preservation Commission, and specifically the chairs of both of those commissions that kind of put the brakes on that fast track. And what happened is that it, it moved the city in a much better direction. It forced the city to collaborate with then the Trust for Public Land and to make room for Grow Food Northampton to have room to, to grow and blossom. And then this year, three commissions, the tree commission, the, the youth commission and the Energy and Sustainability Commission also by force of strong chairs spoke in front of the or spoke to the city to put the brakes on the progression of the climate resilience and regeneration plan because they felt like there were some gross emissions to it. So they were independent voices and, and they served a very important role. And I feel that without that independent voice or even a perception of having an independent voice, citizens will have less incentive to join and might, might fall into some cynicism that the, the outcome of a commission's decision is somehow preordained. And again, I'm not accusing anyone of doing any of these things. I'm saying it's possible and it's implicit in, in positions of power. So I'm going to end there. Thank you for that long explanation. And I, I urge you to deliberate hard on this one and don't think just in the narrows of this commission, these set of personalities and characters, but think of the larger structure that, that you are, that you could be weakening and the trend that you are furthering with this, with approval of this administrative code. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing those thoughts. Definitely. I see Ezekiel.
Hi, everyone. Um, I think Lily said all of that so brilliantly and articulately. So I don't have that much to add to what she just said. I think the work that this commission does is really important and integral. I think the work that the DPW and the tree warden do likewise is really important and integral. And I thank all of them for everything that they're doing. I feel pretty similarly to what Lily was saying. I think the, the name change is great. I think having the, the tree warden serve as a member of the commission is great, but I think that the ex officio chair is problematic. I think that there is a real significance to having citizen commissions, resident commissions be chaired by residents. I think that that is part of their strength. I think that's also part of the opportunity that they provide to residents of the city to learn and grow as leaders. I think that chairing something like a commission is an important place for people to to sort of prepare themselves and learn and think about taking on greater leadership roles in the city, such as being on the council. I think that there's, there's just a real strength in having those resident voices front and center. And I think that the, I would sort of start going to articulate the point correctly. Um, I wouldn't want to see this commission lose that. I think the other changes are great, but I think it's possible to downvote this and ask for a revised or amended version that incorporates the name change, incorporates the membership of the tree warden without the tree warden serving as ex officio chair and preserving a resident chair. Yeah, again, I think I'm not, I'm not an opponent to this as a whole and I don't, I don't love having to be a proponent or an opponent. But I think that I would love to see that changed to this administrative order before it's enacted. And I think that that would be a reasonable thing to request and deliberate more. Thank you all so much.
Ezekiel, before you go, Nate?
Oh, yes. Ezekiel Baskin, Northampton, Mass.
Thank you. Okay, I'm looking for other hands. If there are not other hands that are speaking not in favor of this administrative order, then I will go back to the mayor and ask if he would like to respond.
I, I, I can certainly wait until the council deliberation. That's fine. I don't, I don't really feel like I should be responding to public comments. I, I can answer questions that councillors have during the deliberation, so.
Okay, um, so is there any other comment from the public? You know, it doesn't have to be pro or against. Just anyone else who wants to speak in this public hearing on this topic. Okay, I don't see any. I'll just note that any emails that were sent to the full council will be entered into the record. And if there's nothing, no further comments during the hearing, then
move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion's been made by councillor Dwight, seconded by councillor LeBarge, to close the public hearing. Any discussion on closing it? Roll call, please, on closing the hearing, Laura.
Councillor Foster?
Yes.
Councillor Jarrett?
Yes.
Councillor LeBarge?
Yes.
Councillor Mayori?
Yes.
Councillor Nash?
Yes.
Councillor Quinlan?
Yes.
Councillor Shara?
Yes.
Councillor Thorpe?
Yes.
And councillor Dwight?
Yes.
Okay, the hearing is closed and we will take this up a little bit later on the agenda for a vote by the council. So next we have another public hearing. This is public hearing 20.003, National Grid Verizon New England Poll Petition for Beacon Street. This is petition number 29215572. Per Master General Law, Chapter 166, Section 22, a public hearing will be held on Thursday, October 15th, 2020, at 7:15 p.m. On the petition of National Grid Verizon New England to rec polls and wires upon, along, under or across one or more public ways. You want to?
Move to public hearing. Thank you.
Second.
Motion's been made by councillor Dwight, seconded by councillor Foster to open the hearing. Discussion on opening. Roll call, please, on opening, Laura.
Councillor Jarrett?
Yes.
Councillor LeBarge?
Yes.
Councillor Mayori?
Yes.
Councillor Nash?
Yes.
Councillor Quinlan?
Yes.
Councillor Shara?
Yes.
Councillor Thorpe?
Yes.
Councillor Dwight?
Yes.
And councillor Foster?
Yes.
Okay, the hearing is open. I will just, I'll just quickly read the memo from the DPW because I feel like it, it well and briefly encapsulates what this petition's for. So this is from the DPW Director Donna LaScalia to the Staff Civil Engineer Felix Harvey. And it says, "National Grid is proposing to install one auxiliary pole on Beacon Street approximately 367 feet from the center line of the intersection with Sun Hill Drive across from Pole 5 to serve 47 Beacon Street. The new pole location was field-staked by National Grid. There are no conflicts with utilities or public shade trees at this proposed location. A valid excavation trench permit issued by the City's Department of Public Works is required prior to construction." And I see that we have Lisa joining us from National Grid. So Lisa, the floor is yours.
Hi, how are you? Lisa Jocinski, National Grid. Yes, simply just right now we have a house with a service that's actually tied to their, a big pine tree. And we'd like to get it out of the tree and we're going to have to set a pole to get it, you know, to get it away from the tree and be able to reach the house. So that is the intent of this poll.
Okay, are there any other proponents for this petition? Seeing none, any opponents or people speaking against? I also see none. Again, if you're here to speak to this, use the raise hand feature or pop on and wave your hand at me or send me a chat. But I don't see anybody. And any, or anyone else who just has a general question or would like to speak to this, either neither pro nor con or against. Okay, I don't see any councillors. Any questions for Lisa?
Move to close the public hearing, please.
Second.
Motion's been made by councillor Dwight, seconded by councillor Foster. Motion's been made by councillor Dwight, seconded by councillor Jarrett to close the public hearing. Any discussion on closing? Roll call on closing the hearing, please.
Councillor LeBarge.
Yes.
Councillor Mayori.
Yes.
Councillor Nash.
Yes.
Councillor Quinlan.
Yes.
Councillor Shara.
Yes.
Councillor Thorpe.
Yes.
Councillor Dwight.
Yes.
Councillor Foster.
Yes.
And councillor Jarrett.
Yes.
Okay, the hearing has now been closed. And thank you very much. We're going to do what we did last time, which is vote on this now instead of putting it in the consent agenda, appropriate to do it after the hearing. So is there a motion?
I move to approve, please.
Second.
A motion was made by councillor Dwight, and I think seconded by councillor Mayori, to approve this poll petition. Discussion. Okay, seeing none. Roll call, please, Laura.
Councillor Mayori.
Yes.
Councillor Nash.
Yes.
Councillor Quinlan.
Yes.
Councillor Shara.
Yes.
Councillor Thorpe.
Yes.
Councillor Dwight.
Yes.
Councillor Foster.
Yes.
Councillor Jarrett.
Yes.
And councillor LeBarge.
Yes.
Okay, that has been approved. Thank you so much. Take care.
Good night.
Good night. Okay, moving on. Are there any updates from committee chairs? Councillor Nash.
Yes, thank you. So, let's see my notes here. Community Resources is not meeting at its usual time this month. We're meeting on October 26 at 5:00 PM. And as part of our continuing research and outreach around the Plastic Reduction and Sustainability Ordinance, we're going to have folks from Recycling Works, which is connected to the Center for Eco-Technology. Emma Sabel is going to come and present about how that particular program can advise businesses, like our businesses downtown, around how they can work on ways to maximize the recycling, reuse, and composting programs. So that'll be a feature as part of our meeting. I'm still working on pulling other aspects of the agenda together, but I think that that's going to be a real help, both for my colleagues on council and for any of the business community to drop in on the meeting and learn about this particular service that's available to them. So, anyway, that's my update.
Thank you for that. Other updates or how about one-minute announcements? Councillor Quinlan, then councillor LeBarge.
I just wanted to fill everyone in on what's happened so far with the Northampton Policing Review Commission. We've approved three subcommittees that each committee is dedicated to one aspect of study. One is policing policies and service. One is alternatives to policing, and the third is spending and contracts. The 15-member body was split into three equal groups of five. And we begin with organizational subcommittee meetings next week. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Councillor LeBarge.
Thank you. I want to thank our neighbors. We had a very, very large tree that had fallen on West Dampton Road. And my neighbors, Kevin, Randy, Hudson, my son, everybody, got their chainsaws to get that tree off the road because traffic just could not assess at all. And it really meant a lot to see all the neighbors working together, going around and checking our streets out. We were out to midnight. I mean, Ward 6 really was in very, very bad shape. And I want to thank everybody in the city for working together, and especially in Ward 6. It meant a lot to all of us, so thank you.
Councillor Nash.
Thank you, council president. So, until last week, every school in Northampton had a school sign in front of their building. But that school that didn't have a sign now has one. That is also the oldest school in Northampton, established in 1743. Bridge Street School now has a beautiful new sign directed onto Parsons Street. The new sign is part of an initiative to commemorate Ward 3 friend and leader Jerry Budger. And it's being pulled together by the Ward 3 Neighborhood Association. This is part of two separate signs. This one is for the front of the school. The sign includes a letterboard for announcements for things going on in the school and in the Bridge Street community. The other part, which will be installed later, is a sign to go near where the parents and children congregate for pickup and drop-off, so that people can post notices, you know, that have to do with, again, with activities that are important for families and children and for the Bridge Street community. That, I encourage people to drive by and check out the sign. It's really quite beautiful. And I know the association spent a lot of time in front of the school debating different shades of the color blue and green, and they arrived at the color that they landed on. And I also know that in terms of memorializing my friend Jerry Budger and that his love of Bridge Street School was, he went to school there. He talked about he'd go to school there and he'd go home for lunch and then he'd go back to school. He lived right across the street from the school. And that, and the other important piece about Jerry is Jerry was always about getting out information. In fact, you know, he's always on my shoulder, always pressing me to make sure they notify people. That having not only the sign to designate the school, but that it's encouraging information and community is very much his message. So drive by the school, check out the sign, and hopefully in another few months I'll be making an announcement about that second sign going in. And bravo to the Ward 3 Neighborhood Association. Thank you.
Thank you. I only wish I was at Bridge Street every day like usual to see it and to think of Jerry. It's a really lovely tribute to him, so thank you so much for that. Other announcements? Okay, seeing none. Mayor Narcoitz, you have a communication?
Yes, council president, I just wanted to, by way of update, I sent something out earlier today. But just to kind of update the city council, you may remember that back in July, an order was brought before you seeking the authorization to be able to refinance some of our old debt to basically do a reissuance, a bond reissuance, or a bond refund, as it's sometimes referred to. And so we did embark on that process and went through first a rating analysis with Standard and Poor's, which always happens prior to a debt issuance. And then they then went ahead and did the actual bond sort of auction, if you will. And so I'm pleased to announce that we were able to refinance that debt. $2.65 million were competitively bid on Wednesday, yesterday. And the winning bid provided an average interest rate of 0.476%, which will save the city $292,012 over the remaining life of the bonds. And as part of that, prior to the actual bond sale, our AAA bond rating was once again affirmed by Standard and Poor's. And a report has been issued and it is available on our website along with the other bond ratings. So some positive news during otherwise challenging times. And I think one of the things sort of made the point a little bit during our bond rating call is some of you may remember back in January and February, when I was doing town hall meetings around the city talking about the override. And there was a lot of discussion about the size of our reserves and what in the heck would we ever need that much reserve for? And, you know, what defined a rainy day for me? And, you know, I think the governor said yesterday, "It's raining", when he submitted his revised budget that relies on rainy day funds. And I think the fact that we've been very, very steadily and prudently and in a disciplined fashion, working to rebuild our reserves since the last major economic recession, and now do have some financial flexibility during this economic downturn, sort of was one of the affirming reasons why Standard and Poor's still believes that we have, that we're a very strong credit risk. So I think it's a testament to the work that we've done as a city government over the last seven or eight years. And it sort of affirms that work going forward. So anyway, that is my announcement. And I think you were sent a press release about it. And the updated SMP bond rating is on the mayor's page under the tab for bond ratings. So thank you. That's my only communication this evening.
Thank you. That's excellent news. Thank you for sharing it with us. And it's a testament to the work that you and Finance Director Wright have done, so thank you for that. Okay, so we are moving on to, actually, we have this Committee on City Services is going to be meeting. So we're going to recess for the Committee on City Services right now.
Welcome to a special meeting of the City Service Committee. Laura, will you please call the roll?
Councillor LeBarge.
Present.
Councillor Foster.
Here.
Councillor Mayori.
Here.
And councillor Quinlan.
Here.
The first item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of July 20, 2020, and September 9, 2020, meetings.
Move to approve the minutes, please.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Is there any discussion? If not, roll call, please, Laura.
Councillor Foster.
Yes.
Councillor LeBarge.
Yes.
Councillor Mayori.
Yes.
And councillor Quinlan.
Yes.
Okay, the only other item on tonight's agenda is 20.129, Appointment of Mark Detrow as Principal Assessor. It was referred by the city council on October 1, 2020. As is the custom for department head appointments, Mayor Narcoitz is here to provide an introduction. And Mr. Detrow is here to answer any questions. I'll open the floor for discussion by asking for a motion.
Move to approve the appointment of Mark Detrow?
Yes.
Second.
Mayor, would you please introduce Mark Detrow?
Certainly, it'd be my honor to introduce Mark Dotrell. That's actually how he pronounces it. He's from the Bayou, so I want to make sure we get that correct. That's how I think the pronunciation. And Mark has been our deputy assessor since 2016. And as you saw from his resume, prior to that, he was a certified real estate appraiser in the eastern part of the state. He received his bachelor's degree from Texas State University. He actually has a secondary teaching certificate in social studies and has some education background, as well as his real estate background. He actually also has a restaurant background, which I don't think he got into here. But, so he's had a really diverse background. But most importantly, he's been a really committed employee to our city since joining the assessor's office in 2016. He's worked very hard during that time, not only to learn the job, but also to earn all of the required accreditations that are required to be an assessor in Massachusetts and gain the licenses that are required. And the way it works in many of these financial fields is that you have to have, not only take the coursework, but you also have to have time in service. And so he's been doing both and successfully passed those that are needed. The other thing I would just say is that, you know, Mark has been really excellent in terms of working with customers and serving customers who have questions. I think he's really, has a strong ethic around customer service, which is so important in all of our offices, but particularly in the area of assessing, which can often be a very confusing, you know, can be very confusing to people and obviously involves their tax bill. And there's a lot of programs that need explanation and abatement programs and other things. So it really requires somebody who has, you know, the ability to explain some fairly complex programs. And that was, I think, one of the great strengths of Principal Assessor Seraphin. And I think that Mark also has that strength. And then I would also say just finally that Mark has sort of also, I've had the opportunity to actually sort of see Mark in this role for a little while, because Principal Assessor Seraphin, who you know has now retired, you know, was out for a period on a medical leave. And so Mark really needed to, had to sort of step forward and sort of take over some of those functions during that period. So he sort of had almost like a sort of a dress rehearsal, if you will, for the role. And during COVID-19, no less, during a very challenging time when we needed to go remote and be able to deliver services remote. And he really did that in a seamless fashion. And again, worked really hard to keep this department functioning. So when Principal Assessor Seraphin announced her retirement after a long and distinguished career with the city, I consulted her, I consulted the finance director, and had a really, you know, long conversation with Mark. And he was the clear choice to me in terms of succession within this department to move him up to this position. So it's my pleasure to put forward Mark Dotrell to be the next principal assessor for the city of Northampton.
Thank you, Mayor Narcoitz. Mr. Detrow, did you want to add anything before I recognize the councillors?
Mayor Narcoitz said nearly everything I was going to say about my own background and my experience. Very, very nice words. I've been working for the city of Northampton for four years under Ms. Jones Seraphin, who I love working for and I truly hate to see her go. But I will do my best to carry on the very long tradition that she's been put forth in our office, helping. She loved helping the elderly, loved helping the farmers, love working with people and trying to make sense of everything. And I'm just going to continue to try and do what she had been doing for the last four decades.
Thank you, Mark, very much. If there are no more questions, or is there any questions or comments from the councillors that you would want to ask Mark to 12? So if there are no more questions, I would be.
Councillor LeBarge.
Oh, I didn't see that. Sorry.
Sorry. Thank you very much. And Mark, thanks for being here tonight to meet with us and let us get a chance to speak with you. I wonder, you know, you just mentioned that you. I wonder, you, you know, you just mentioned that you look forward to, to holding up the great work that's been done for, for a long time by, by a wonderful assessor. And I just wonder if you might take a minute, and, and now you've been, you've been with our, with our city in this office for four years. If you would describe one challenge that you see in the office. I mean, the mayor mentioned that kind of explaining everything, having to be able to talk with residents about their tax bills and, and their homes and so forth is a challenge. But if you could describe one challenge or obstacle there and, and some idea that you have to kind of conquer that. I'd love to hear an idea that you have to, to move the office forward.
Um, one thing I would like to move the office forward a little bit is just make it a little more internet friendly, I should say. The, the public website, the assessor's public site could definitely use some work. It, it actually has less information on it now than it did two years ago. And I'm not really sure why that is. I, I don't think it'll be that challenging, to be honest. I think if I can speak with our, the, our contractor that puts it out, it's a company called Big Box. Excuse me, Big Room. And I'm, I don't, if, if they need information as well from the planning department, who does make the maps, you know, maybe you could speak with them. I know that South Hadley, their plant, I'm sorry, their public assessor site, their cards, their property record cards go straight to a GIS system. I know the assessor here in South Hadley, maybe I can speak with her to figure out how that happens. That's one, that's one obstacle I'd like to conquer. I mean, just other various obstacles or trying to convince people that I don't necessarily have anything to do with their values raising. That's just, uh, yeah, the way I have to follow the way the sales go. And I'm beholden and policed by the Massachusetts Department of Revenues, Rules and Regulations. But that's just, goes with the job.
Well, I thank you for that. And I would just note that, you know, your resume certainly speaks for itself in terms of your qualifications. And getting the, the recommendation of, of Ms. Seraphin and of the mayor certainly puts you in good light with me. So thanks very much.
Thank you.
Yes, Councilor Foster.
Thank you, Councilor LaBarge. Mark, thank you for being here tonight. And I apologize for the mispronunciation of your name.
That's all right.
Councilor Quinnland asked the question, actually, that, that I was planning to ask you as well. Though I'll take the opportunity, can you say your last name one more time? So I don't mispronounce again.
All right, so it's Dotrell.
Dotrell.
Like bread, dough, trell, dough.
Thank you. And, and Mark, I've referred a couple of constituents to you, to your office over the last couple of months who have had questions. And they've, you and the constituents have CC'd me on replies. And they've been prompt and thorough and explained fairly complicated concepts in a way that, that was very understandable. And I appreciate that. And, and, you know, congratulate you.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Mark, I've known Joan for a long time. And I have brought in many people, just not in Ward Six, but throughout the city, who felt very embarrassed because they needed help. And it was very warming in that office. And she made residents feel very welcoming. And I think you have seen it with your own eyes, with Joan, working with residents who are in dire need of help, but didn't know how to get the paperwork and how to go about making out that paperwork. So you must be dealing with that, where people need help with the, going through the Community Preservation Act to get, you know, some money off of that, the stormwater fee, their taxes in general. I mean, you can actually see that they feel so embarrassed because they've worked hard all their lives and they're coming in to ask for help. Can you talk about that a little bit? Because I think it's so valuable for how people feel when they come out of that office, that yes, they were treated with respect and dignity. And they knew that they were going to get this help from out of that office.
Well, I feel those people, you know, I, I, I feel, I truly feel for those people. And I don't feel, I think they shouldn't be embarrassed at all. I'm more than happy to help. I come, I do not come from a wealthy background. I lived in Section 8 housing when I was a small child. There is nothing wrong with asking for help. These, these are rights, these are laws, these people, they, all they need to do is fill out the paperwork and it's Massachusetts law, our town's law. They're more than deserving of having any small break we can have.
Because I know I just had a resident and I told them to call your office. So I don't know if they did it today or they're doing it tomorrow. And I told them, I, I gave them the number and everything. And I said, you just tell them exactly what kind of help you need. And it's just, it's amazing how people are feeling out there that, you know, the economy is so bad and everything and they're hurting and to ask for help. And I think it makes a difference, no matter what department it is, how, when people can go in and feel like they are being wanted. And that's important and the help to get. So thank you, Mark.
You're welcome, Ms. LaBarge. Thank you.
If there's no more discussion, I would like to call the motion to positively recommend Mr. Dotrell. Did I get it right?
You got it right. You got it right. Yes.
As Principal Assessor to a vote. Roll call, please, Laura.
Councilor Foster.
Yes.
Councilor LaBarge.
Yes.
Councilor Mayori.
Yes.
And Councilor Quinnland.
Yes.
As we have a motion and a second to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Roll call, please, Laura.
Sure. Councilor LaBarge.
Yes.
Councilor Mayori.
Yes.
Councilor Quinnland.
Yes.
And Councilor Foster.
Yes.
Oh, we're not done.
Thank you very much, everyone. I appreciate it. I truly do.
Thank you. So we're back in council and we are about to take up your appointment with the full counsel, Mr. Dotrell. So if you'll hold on one second. So we have next on the agenda, it's 20.129, Appointment of Mark Dotrell as Principal Assessor. And this was with a positive recommendation from the City Services Committee. So is there a motion?
Move to approve, please.
Motion was made by Councilor Quinnland and seconded by Councilor Jarrett? Yes. Um, so is there discussion? I, I want to thank Mr. Dotrell for being here and for his really wonderful and eloquent and compassionate remarks. So thank you so much. It was very nice to learn a bit about, about you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Comments, councilors, or questions? Councilor Dwight.
Uh, Mr. Dotrell, I, I too am, I'm also, by the way, my grandmother, who was, who's from New Orleans, would have told me that your name was pronounced Dotroy. But.
That, Dotroy, en français, yeah.
En français. I'm, I'm particularly, I was particularly moved and taken by your very sensitive and thoughtful comments, relevant to people, particular concerns and possible shame associated with their, their inquiries. And you, the, I, I, you know, not a lot of people would particularly volunteer that in the course of a, of a job interview, which let's face it, this is sort of what that is. And that was your go-to. And I found that very moving and very encouraging. So thank you. And I'll leave it at that. And congratulations, by the way. Prematurely, but I'll say it now.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Other questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, Laura, roll call, please, on the appointment of Mark Dotrell.
Councilor Nash.
Yes.
Councilor Quinnland.
Yes.
Councilor Shara.
Yes.
Councilor Thorpe.
Yes.
Councilor Dwight.
Yes.
Councilor Foster.
Yes.
Councilor Jarrett.
Yes.
Councilor LaBarge.
Yes.
And Councilor Mayori.
Yes.
Hey, your permit's been approved. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. I, I love working in the City of Northampton. So I really appreciate all of y'all taking your time. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, moving next to the consent agenda, I'm going to read the titles of the items and ask if there are any removals for discussion, because there's no discussion on the consent agenda. So we have the minutes of September 3rd, 2020. We have 20.117, Appointment to the Arts Council. This is, uh, I don't see a name under here, Laura. Oh.
Oh, Abbottello, is that? Oh, dear.
Yep.
Trying to pull it up. Michael Abbottello. Thank you.
Okay.
Whoops.
Um, let me see if I open this up.
Oh, okay.
Yes, so Michael Abbottello, 161 Main Street in Leeds. Term is September 2020 to June 2023. This is to fill a vacancy. And then 20.127, Appointments to Various Committees. These all have received positive recommendations from the City Services Committee. To the Arts Council, Ashlyn Craddock, 386 Bridge Street. Terms, September 2020 to June 2023. This is to fill a vacancy. Conservation Commission, Jennifer Smith, 24 Audubon Road in Leeds. This is the term, September 2020 to June 2023, to fill a vacancy. To the Disabilities Commission, Kathy Murray, 50 Laurel Park. September 2020 to June 2023 is the term to fill a vacancy. Human Rights Commission, Susan McDonald-Bolanos, 1 Chapin Way, Unit 7517, Smith College. Term is September 2020, June 2022, to fill a vacancy. To the Planning Board, Jenna White, full member. Term, September 2020, June 2022. This is to fill the unexpired term of UFPD Oliveria. And then Chris Tate, 46 Upland Road in Leeds. Term, September 2020, June 2021. This is to fill the unexpired term of Jenna White. And that is the consent agenda. Any removals?
Move to approve, please.
Second, motions been made by Councilor Dwight, seconded by Councilor LaBarge. Laura, roll call, please, on the consent agenda?
Councilor Quinnland.
Yes.
Councilor Shara.
Yes.
Councilor Thorpe.
Yes.
Councilor Dwight.
Yes.
Councilor Foster.
Yes.
Councilor Jarrett.
Yes.
Councilor LaBarge.
Yes.
Councilor Mayori.
Yes.
And Councilor Nash.
Yes.
Okay, consent agenda's been approved. And we are now going to recess for the Finance Committee. Laura, um, will you please call the role of Finance?
Councilor LaBarge.
Yes.
Councilor Quinnland.
Yes.
Councilor Shara.
Yes.
And Councilor Thorpe.
Yes.
Okay, our first item is approval of minutes from the previous meeting, which was September 3rd, 2020. This is not our previous meeting, but these are for the minutes of September 2020. Is there a motion on the minutes?
Make a motion.
Second.
Second.
Motion was made by Councilor LaBarge, seconded by Councilor Thorpe. Any discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, roll call, please, Laura.
Councilor LaBarge.
Yes.
Councilor Quinnland.
Yes.
Councilor Shara.
Yes.
And Councilor Thorpe.
Yes.
Okay, the minutes have been approved. And next, we have the First Quarter Financial Report presented by Finance Director Susan Wright. Susan.
Hi.
Hi.
Okay, so I'm going to go through the General Fund first. We'll start with the revenues. And I'll just remind everybody that the first quarter is, of this year, is very different from first quarters in other years. There are a number of line items in our budget that are very much impacted by the local economy and the national economy and the issues of COVID. So in particular, I'm just going to highlight the line items in our revenue side of the budget that are, that are the most sensitive to what is happening due to COVID. So if we start with the General Fund revenues, the section on taxes and excise, personal property and real estate taxes are not generally impacted by this COVID emergency. People have been paying their bills. We are not seeing a particularly large amount or unusual amount of outstanding real estate. Motor vehicle excise is coming in fine. But if you look down hotel motel tax, on the copy that you have right now, the fourth, the first quarter payment hadn't come in when I printed this. It has since come in, and that is one of the indicators that we're looking at right now. So hotel motel tax, this, this year, the first quarter brought in $66,469. To give you a sense of how much that is off from the first quarter of last year, we brought in $226. So we're $160,000 less than the first quarter of last year for hotel motel. This reflects the period of May, June, and July, which would have benefited from a graduation at Smith College, et cetera. So this is, you know, these are not surprises, but these are, these are numbers that, you know, we are going to have to deal with. None of them are shocking. The meals tax, the amount that came in for our first quarter was $126,000. And last year, the same quarter, we brought in $189,000. So that was about 60% of what we brought in this quarter last year. Again, this reflects what was happening in May, June, and July. So again, graduation at Smith and other events that happened in the spring in the valley would have brought in more money. But it is heartening to see that we were at 60% because that does tell us that takeout is, was a good thing. And then hopefully next quarter, the outdoor dining that was set up for July, August, and September, hopefully that's going to improve too. The recreational marijuana or the adult use, the amount that we got in was $307,348. This again reflects May, June, and July sales. Last year, the first quarter brought in $535. So this is down $235,000. However, it is up from our fourth quarter of 2020, which was $271,000. So again, we know that, you know, comparing to this quarter last year, you know, we were relatively still the only game in town. So it's not surprising that our quarterly take last year for this quarter was more. But the 307 was, is a good number and we were pleased to see that. The rest of the items in this section on taxes and excise are coming in as, as we would anticipate. You see a number of lines that say pilot. Those are payment in lieu of taxes. And those are not billed until after you set the tax rate. So those bills don't go out till January. So that's why there's no receipts there. The next section is charges for services, which is basically parking, ambulance, recreation. I will say the parking is probably the most concerning trend that we've seen. Parking revenues for the first quarter normally are around $500,000 and they were $88,000. So parking is at about 20% of what we would anticipate. So we are going to have to adjust when we, and the mayor's going to talk a little bit about that when I finish with the quarterly report. But we are going to have to adjust our expectations for parking revenue for this year. Normally, parking would bring in about 1.8 million. We budgeted in the 2021 budget, 1.3. And it's unlikely that we're going to get to that number. So we will be adjusting that. If you look, we do have a bright spot, I guess, on ambulance revenue. We saw in our first quarter, $530,000. Last year, it was $580,000 for the same quarter. So it's pretty much close to the mark. And if the trend continues, in 2020, we brought in 2.2 million in ambulance. So when we revise the budget, we'll be able to revise the revenue projection for ambulance revenues up, which will help fill the hole created by some of the other revenues that are, are coming up a bit short. In the Charges for Services, we're not seeing too many concerning trends there. Most of those are activities that are continuing despite the COVID emergency. The next section, which is Licenses and Permits, those have been impacted. The Building Inspector Permits, the first quarter, we brought in $111,000 compared to last year, which was $158,000 in this same quarter. So we have seen a little bit of a slowdown there. Plumbing permits are also down a little bit over last year, the same quarter. But the rest of this category is looking pretty much on track. The next section, which is Federal Revenue, which is Medicaid reimbursement for the schools. We normally don't have much in the first quarter for this, but we probably will adjust this revenue source because with the schools working remotely, they are not providing as many Medicaid eligible services at the moment. So the reimbursement we'll be getting will probably be down. State revenue, right now, we've been getting our revenue based on a 1/12 budget. The mayor is gonna talk a little bit more about the cherry sheets that were released yesterday from the governor, so I'll skip over that section. The next section is Fines, and again, you can see that there's parking tickets. Parking tickets, this quarter last year, we brought in $192,000. This year, it was $71,000 for this quarter. So we will be adjusting downward our expectation for parking tickets as well as parking revenue because the two go hand in hand. But overall, there's only one other category in the miscellaneous, the Interest on Investments. Last year, by this first quarter, we brought in about $91,000. We're at $24,000 this quarter. That is something that goes up and down. Last year just happened to be a really, really good quarter for interest on investments. It's not a huge line item in our budget, but it's one that we're watching as well. But overall, when you take the total, the percentage of our revenues that had come in in the first quarter was about equal to the percentage of revenues that we brought in last year, even despite some of these downturns. So again, we'll be adjusting this. The revenue side of the picture is something that has never settled until we set the tax rate. And this year in particular, there'll be a lot more changes before we do that. The next financial I'd like to go over would be the General Fund Expenses. There's not a lot to point out here. Everything is tracking generally the way we would have thought. There are no concerning trends here. Department Personnel Budgets are staying on track. Some are a little bit under because we do have some vacancies in some departments. And General Fund, Fund OM spending in the departments is generally on track as well. Most departments, you know, are back to kind of normal operations after the initial shutdown. So they are picking up where they left off and doing the work of their department and spending their OM budgets as they were outlined in the budget submitted by the mayor. So overall, there are no concerning trends at all. I do wanna point out, the mayor talked about us refinancing the debt. The debt was structured so that the savings will begin in FY '22 and continue to FY '29, which were the years that this debt was refinanced. So while we have obtained about $290,000 worth of savings, the savings on debt payments is not built into this year. So the debt line will be as budgeted. So that is the revenues for the General Fund and the expenses, and I'll just touch briefly on the Enterprise Fund. The Enterprise Fund revenues are also having some issues. The water and sewer rates with Smith College shutdown, with some of the businesses shut down. We are selling less water, and sewer rates are tied to water usage, and so the two go hand in hand. We had, last year at this time, we had brought in $1.55 million in water rates, and we've brought in $1.35. So we're about $200,000 for this quarter down from last year. For sewer, it's almost identical, another about $200,000 less. And this is tied to just what's going on and the fact that Smith College is not closed, but it is operating at a much reduced capacity, and so are businesses. And then in general, for the Enterprise Funds, for the expenditures, there's no concerning trends there. They are doing the work that was scheduled to be done in the budget. So there's nothing there that I need to draw your attention to. With that, if you don't have any specific questions about those line items, I'll turn it over to the mayor, who's gonna talk a little bit about what kind of adjustments we'll be making as we finalize and set the tax rate for FY '21.
Thank you, Susan. Any questions for Susan before we hand it over to Mayor Nerkowitz? Counselor Jarrett?
Thank you, Susan. I just wondered if you could explain. I noticed that IT has spent, it says, 56% of its budget already in the first quarter, but 208,000 of that is encumbrances. What are encumbrances?
Encumbrances, most of IT's budget is software and support, support fees for our financial software, for other software. So what they've done is they encumber all of the contracts that they need to pay for the year. And then they pay them out as they become due. So they wanna make sure, encumbering the money, make sure that you're reserving the money for the intended use. And so they will be paying those, renewal of those various software licenses, et cetera, as they come due. They're not all due on July 1st, which is why they encumber the money. But it's not unusual for them to have, you know, their budget is so heavily based on those things, and they pay them upfront.
Okay. Then the Forbes and the Lilly libraries were departments that looked like they spent about a third of their budget, though we're a quarter of the way through?
We give them their budget every month, but we're usually like one month ahead. So we've given them, like, July.
I know, but you know I.
So we've given them probably, let's see, July, August, September, October. So we are usually one month ahead of where we are in how we pay them.
Okay.
They only get 12 payments, so.
And then finally, I noticed the grand total for the General Fund expenses shows that we've spent 28.6% of the total. But then I noticed that contributory retirement is bundled, as if we've spent it all in the first quarter, we contribute all. So if we spread that out over the year, it looks like it would be that we've spent about 20.4%. Is that accurate?
Yeah, yes. There's a number of things that we pay on July 1st. On July 1st, we pay all of our insurances, property, liability, workers' comp, police and fire accident. And the reason we do that is we get 3% discount by paying on July 1st. The $6 million assessment for our share of the retire, you know, the city's contribution to the retirement system is always paid July 1st, too. That helps with the Retirement Board. That helps with getting the money invested as soon as possible so that it works for the retirement system as quickly as possible. So there's a lot of things that get paid right up front on July 1st. So I don't usually pay too much attention to the percentage on certain line items because I know which ones are, you know, they're gonna be at 100% because I know that we've made that payment. The ones that I do look at is, on the expense side, I look at the personnel line items because I want to make sure that, you know, that nobody's spent more than their payroll than they should have spent at this point because payroll would not be something we would ever be spending in advance.
Right. Great. Thank you for those clarifications.
Any other questions for Dr. Wright? Okay, Mayor Nerkowitz.
Thank you, and thank you, as always, to Finance Director Wright. I just wanted to sort of build on those reports and the revenue shortfalls that we had anticipated in some cases. Yesterday, the governor kind of surprised everybody. There was very little notice. A notice went out that he was holding a press conference, and he was gonna resubmit the FY 2021 budget. We were not sure that we would get a state budget for the year. They'd been doing 1/12 budgets. And so many of our cities and towns were sort of wondering how we would end up setting our tax rate without some of the key information that's required when the governor submits a budget or the legislature on our cherry sheet. So he held a press conference. He has submitted a revised budget for FY 2021. The state, not unsurprisingly, is showing major revenue shortfalls due to COVID-19. And the governor's proposal would basically, through some savings in healthcare, but also some significant use of rainy day funds or reserve funds, would, you know, would essentially be able to fund the budget for FY 2021 without significant cuts. And most importantly, to cities and towns at least, the budget that he has presented is maintaining level-funded, unrestricted, local government aid, or UGA, which is one of the primary local aid line items for cities and towns. And he's also going to hold level for FY '21, our Chapter 70 allotment. So basically, we would receive what we received in FY 2020. And so that's good news. There are a few other little tweaks and changes on the cherry sheet, but on the whole, we are in fairly good shape in terms of how it works out for us. I think most people are thinking that '21 is kind of the post-COVID bridge year, and that '22 will probably be one of the more challenging years, particularly if we're relying on one-time revenues to fill the gap, such like the state is doing and like some cities and towns will have to do. So in order for us to be able to set our tax rate, we will be making some adjustments, and we'll be coming forward. You'll actually see Principal Assessor Dotrell coming forward to do the annual tax classification hearing. But my plan will be most likely next month to submit to you some orders that would make some adjustments within the FY 2021 budget. And that will likely involve needing to tap into our reserve funds, primarily the Fiscal Stability Fund, which is sort of what that fund is designed for. So I wanted to sort of alert you to that. Again, we just got this cherry sheet yesterday, and we're doing some analysis, and we're also looking at, you know, all of our revenues, as you've seen tonight. And we'll be trying to make some final calculations and come forward to you with some transfers that will essentially adjust our budget for FY 2021 to ensure that it stays in balance and that we're able to fund all of the commitments we've made in the FY 2021 budget. So that's more of an update and more of a, just letting you know where we are based on headlines you may have seen about the governor. And so our hope will be to submit something to you in November that will sort of do what the governor has done at the state level, is make adjustments to be able to ensure that we can balance our budget here at the local level. But I don't believe, you know, again, we have significant reserves. We have very strong reserves. And I, you know, I believe we'll need to use some. But I think we're, at least for 2021, we're in a good position. And hopefully, as, you know, some of these, like the parking revenue, I mean, the quarter that we were looking at, you know, parking was closed. I mean, we had shut down all of our parking. So we were, you know, collecting no revenue during that time period. And then, you know, coming out of it, we understand that, you know, with things closed and with people working from home, there's less people accessing the parking system. Where that goes in the future, we don't know, but we'll definitely have to make some adjustments in the parking area and in some of the other revenue areas that you heard about. So that's my update.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Okay. Thank you so much, Susan and Mayor Nerkowitz, for that update, which is, you know, not as dire as I thought it was gonna be, so that is good news.
And it's not unexpected. I think when we submitted the budget, we knew we were doing it without a state budget. We, you know, we were pretty clear that, you know, it was a little bit unorthodox that we were doing it that way. And we were doing it, we were trying to make estimates basically back in April and May, not really knowing what the impacts of COVID-19 would be and how long it would be and what things they would affect. You know, for example, we thought ambulance revenues, which were flatlined because nobody was calling for ambulances, nobody was going to the doctor, nobody was going to the hospital. You know, we never thought, we thought that was gonna be flatlined for the whole first quarter, and it turned out it actually rebounded. It was flat, and then it rebounded. So that was one that went in our favor. Obviously, in other areas, the downturn may be a little longer and a little more pronounced. So we'll just have to make sure that we're accounting for that and making some more updated assumptions based on the data that we now have after one quarter.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so if there are no other questions or comments, then we will move on in Finance. Thank you. We're gonna move on to the financial orders that we have. So first is 20.133, in order to accept gifts of value of replacing sidewalk sections adjacent to 109 Main Street. And this is upon the recommendation of the mayor, the city solicitor, and the Department of Public Works. Whereas the city is the owner of Main Street and Gothic Street layouts in Northampton, Massachusetts. And whereas Trident Realty Corporation is the owner of property at 109 Main Street, Northampton, Massachusetts, Assessor's Map 32A, Parcel 140, with grantor's rights to said parcel contained in a deed recorded in the Hampshire Registry of Deeds in Book 6062, Page 34. And whereas the parties are uncertain as to the location of their common boundary line between their respective parcels, which date back to the early development in Northampton. Whereas Trident Realty wishes to replace approximately 50 linear feet of concrete sidewalk at its own cost within the uncertain area in front of the building due to its current disrepair and potential safety hazard. And whereas to the extent the city has an interest in the location of the proposed sidewalk replacement, Trident Realty needs the consent of the city to make such repairs and to accept such repairs as a gift to the city. Whereas the DPW has no objection to the proposed repairs that meet the DPW standards for concrete sidewalk construction and appreciates the offer of Trident Realty to make such repairs. Order that Northampton City Council authorizes Trident Realty undertake the replacement approximately 50 linear feet of concrete sidewalk in front of their building at 109 Main Street and accepts such sidewalk replacement as a gift to the city. Is there?
Move to, move forward the positive recommendation.
Seconded.
Motion's made by Counselor Quinnlan, seconded by Counselor Labarge. And there's also a diagram. Laura, I don't know if you, did you put that?
I will. No, I did not yet, but let me.
Show folks where that is. And, oops. So there we go. So I now can't see all the faces, which is fine, but Mayor Nerkowitz, were you gonna speak to this?
Sure, I certainly can. Yeah, this is, it's actually, there's actually a Scrivener's error in the order that needs to be fixed because it says 50 linear feet. It's actually 50 square feet. So that was a Scrivener's error, but if you look at the diagram that you have in front of you, which was there and that was gone, you can see the area in question that's in that shaded area. And again, they're doing some work on their own property, and there is a section of sidewalk. Yeah, you can see the arrow pointing to that 50 square feet of sidewalk that sort of leads to that little art area, little art park. And so they're basically proposing to, as a gift to the city, to repair that sidewalk as part of some other site work that's being done. So basically asking you to accept that as a gift, that work to the city, so. And that requires a vote because it's a gift.
Got it, any?
The only other Scrivener's error is, I think inadvertently, the city solicitor was put on as a sponsor of this, I I know he reviewed it for to legal form, and I think that was a Scrivener's error. He doesn't generally sponsor orders, so I think that was also a Scrivener's error as well, so.
Okay.
So correcting the the linear to square and then I think removing the city solicitor as a sponsor of this would be two Scrivener's errors I would request.
Okay. Thank you, we can do that, Councilor Nash.
Mayor, I I was, I took a little walk along that sidewalk earlier today and it's terrible. It's it's really great that this is going to get done, I think this is, this is a really terrific gift that we should accept. Do we have any details on? Because there's a discontinuity between, there there's a sidewalk that runs along First Churches. And then in front of what is Urban Outfitters. And this sidewalk runs perpendicular to it and where it where it breaks between those two sidewalks, there's. That it's actually about six to seven inches lower than the two adjoining sidewalks, and I'm just asking. If the work isn't just going to repair the existing sidewalk, but also have it ADA compliant. So that someone can travel from the sidewalk in front of First Churches down to Urban Outfitters. I, we may not have that detail yet, but my hope is that that is going to occur.
So that's something I'll need to confirm, but I'm I'm I would, I'll need to confirm that and get back to you on that, but I would assume that that would be their intent. As they're hoping to allow people to safely move back and forth across their property, so. We can, we can look into that, but that's a, that's an excellent point. I just don't have that level of detail tonight, but I can certainly get that.
Thank you, Mayor. Maybe for a second reading?
Sure.
That'd be awesome.
Even before a second reading, we can get that.
Okay. There was a, there was a request for two readings on this tonight, though.
There was?
I don't see it.
Yeah.
Yes.
There is, you're right, Counselor.
Well, it's probably because Trident wants to do the work before, while the weather is still, you know, doable. I don't know, is, I don't know if any. I don't know if the DPW Director has any information, I don't know. I don't know if planning has any information about this. I just, I don't have that information, so. That I can give you tonight, I can't tell you about what the other sidewalk plans are within the interior of their property, I, yeah.
Director Liz Calley is here.
Okay, hi, good evening, everybody. Yeah, so we're going to make sure that those grades are compliant as part of this, we we will not authorize work. It's going to create uneven surfaces or tripping hazards, so we will work with them to make sure this is compliant.
Thank you. Thanks for answering that. Any other questions or? Comments? Counselor Jarrett.
Just a comment that this seems since since the ownership is somewhat uncertain, this this seems very appropriate. If it was more certain, I would want to have a discussion as to whether. Property owners could kind of jump the line on sidewalk repairs by donating just for their property. But since this is something where, you know, if they owned it, they would just be doing it, and we don't know. It seems, doesn't seem like we need to address that question.
Okay. Other comments, questions? Okay, roll call, please, Laura, on a positive recommendation. You're muted. Muted again.
Counselor LaBarge?
Yes.
Okay, Counselor Quinlan?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
And Counselor Thorpe?
Yes.
Okay, that moves forward with the positive recommendation. Next is 20.134 in order to appropriate funds to complete the stormwater analysis Beaver Brook Estates, Leeds.
Counselor, I need to re-accuse myself on this, Counselor Shara.
Okay. Counselor LaBarge has recused herself. This is upon the recommendation of the mayor, Office of Planning Sustainability and the Planning Board, whereas the Planning Board has retained $40,000 escrow. As a financial performance guarantee at Beaver Brook Estates. As a special permit condition of approval to ensure the completion of this project, and whereas the DPW staff have repeatedly requested the the final calculations. Of a professional engineer to ascertain substantial compliance with stormwater standards and with stormwater permit approved by the DPW incorporated by the Planning Board as a condition of approval of the project. And whereas the developer of Beaver Brook has failed and refused to provide the requested documentation. Whereas as a result of the failure to provide evidence of compliance, the Planning Board has voted to refuse the return of the escrow funds. And whereas the city will utilize these funds to hire a professional engineer to evaluate the stormwater system's infiltration structures. Estimate storage volumes, complete recharge calculations to determine if the systems are in compliance with the stormwater recharge standards. And to the extent that the system is noncompliant, to prepare bid contracts to compete to compete this system. To complete the system to the extent necessary to bring the system into compliance and. Whereas improvements will be completed only to the extent that they can be paid for with the escrow funds. And any additional work required will be the responsibility of the condominium association and or property owners at Beaver Brook. To come into and maintain and compliance with the stormwater permit. Order that North Hampton City Council authorizes the expenditure of $40,000 from the escrow account designated as Beaver Brook Nominee Trust. Patrick Melnick, trustee, to be used to meet the costs and the expenses of the city to complete the stormwater assessment and compliance. As specified in the approved plan and to refund any remaining funds, if any. Okay.
Move for a positive recommendation.
Motion's been made by Counselor Quinlan.
Okay.
Seconded by Counselor Thorpe. Carolyn or Mayor Narcoits?
I would defer to Carolyn Mish on this, this is a planning board specific matter.
Carolyn.
Hi, thank you. I think, I mean, all of that is spelled out in the requested order, but the. The background is that. This project has gone on for many years and up in Leeds and we've and in the last. Probably since 2016, we've been trying to obtain information about the functioning. The changes that have happened and how the system functions and whether or not it's compliant with the. Original permit that was granted. And we've just. Come to a point where. We no longer have confidence that 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 we can. Get that information without going through this path, I mean, we hope that. By asking for permission to spend the money from City Council, that that will be enough of. An incentive to have the developer come forward and present the information that we've requested. So we may in the end not actually spend the funds.
I would, I would just add to that, this is, you actually had a matter that somewhat similar to this on your last agenda. Which had to do with, again, another performance sort of bond of sorts. For non-performance related to a stormwater system, not exactly the same thing, because this is a case where. The utility wasn't, the work wasn't completed and the the developer is sort of having some financial difficulties. But this is just, it's a similar methodology where the Planning Board requires that. This sort of fund be put away in escrow to ensure that this, that that the builder developer. Does in fact build the system that they were permitted to build and said they would build and that the homeowners. Will rely on to make sure that the property is drained properly, so somewhat not exactly on point, but. Similar to something you just recently did up at Village Hill with the north development up there.
And it's pretty common for many permits for the Planning Board to hold to require that there is this sort of collateral financial performance guarantee. In the event that it needs to be used, it does protect the end users, you know, the property owners that buy into these projects.
Am I right that in the second to last, whereas in the last sentence, it should say. To prepare bid contracts to complete this system as opposed to compete this system?
Yes.
So Laura, can we?
We're not going to compete.
Yes.
Can we just make that correction?
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome, any questions or comments?
I have one.
Counselor Thorpe.
Thank you, thank you, Carolyn, for being here, I just have one question. So the Planning Board legally. Can both refuse to return the escrow funds?
Yes, so the process, when a when an applicant has set aside some. Guarantee, a financial guarantee for a project, the. At the end of the project, the applicant. Seeks the return of those funds and does so by asking the Planning Board to release the funds. Based on evidence that a project is complete, so the board has to vote yea or nay as to whether. They feel the project is complete and whether those funds can be released. And so in this instance, they voted against the request for the release of funds. The Planning Board, I'm sorry, just to continue that, the Planning Board can't authorize the expenditure of the money, so that's why you have to come to City Council for that authorization.
That was, that was the.
That was your question?
That was kind of just like a a basic understanding of the. You know, continuity of it.
Counselor Maori?
Yeah, so the, so the 40 grand in escrow is would would go to the engineer. Through the assessment, but also any kind of physical work that might need to be done to be in compliance, that's what, because that's a lot of money, I'm just curious about that, right? It's not just the assessment.
Right, so the assess, so it could be that through this assessment, it's determined that the system. Meets the permit and the standards, the city standards. And then in that scenario, then all the remaining money would go back to the developer. Or it could be that there are some things that need to be modified in order to come up to compliance and then. We'd bid out that work. And if there's remaining, if it's just a little bit of work and it doesn't take up all that money, then we return the remaining piece of it. If there's a lot of work that's to be done and exceeds that amount, then we can only. Contract as much as. 40,000 goes and the rest of it would be, the burden would be back on the homeowners association because they're the ones that. Take on the responsibility of that system as owners when they buy into a project.
Oh, okay, I see, so you, so the issue really is that we don't really know how much work needs to be done, and that's actually the problem. Do you think it, I guess I shouldn't make you guess, but I was just like, is it? Would it be a typical thing that it would be much more than that, I'm just curious, I'm just thinking homeowner association.
Yeah. You know, in this scenario, we have no idea, because we just haven't been given the information, so we don't want to assume one way or the other, what needs to be done, if anything at all.
Yeah, I'll be very curious to see what, you know, what happened here, because I kind of. Don't really understand the reticence of sharing that information or lack of information, but I guess it will become clear, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, seeing none, roll call, Laura, on a positive recommendation?
Counselor Quinlan?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe?
Yes.
And Counselor LaBarge?
She's recused.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, okay.
Okay, that moves forward with the positive recommendation. And Counselor LaBarge, you may come back. And I, there's no new business, so.
Move to a current finance committee.
Second.
This is made by Counselor Quinlan and seconded by Counselor Thorpe, Laura, roll call, please, on adjourning.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe?
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge? Not yet returned, perhaps?
Yet returned.
And Counselor Quinlan?
Yes.
Okay, we are back from finance into the full council and we are going to take up those financial orders. So the first one. You know, let's take them out of order since Counselor LaBarge is not back yet, why don't we take 20.134 in order to appropriate funds to complete the stormwater analysis Beaver Brook Estates? Oh, Counselor LaBarge, I was going to do the Beaver Brook ones first, if you, if you're going to recuse yourself. So this is first reading, again, 20.134 in order to appropriate funds to complete the stormwater analysis Beaver Brook Estate in Leeds. Is there a? I heard a motion?
Second. That was. I I made, I made the initial motion, so.
I heard the initial motion and then the second was Counselor Thorpe, yes, Counselor Nash? Counselor Nash? Okay, Counselor Nash. Discussion on first reading. Hearing none, roll call, please, Laura.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Foster?
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett?
Yes.
Counselor Maori?
Yes.
Counselor. Nash?
Yes.
And Counselor Quinlan?
Yes.
Okay, that passes in first reading, now we'll go back to 20.133 in order to accept gift of value of replacing sidewalk sections. Adjacent to 109 Main Street, this is first reading, two readings are requested. And Counselor LaBarge, you are there, terrific, is there a motion? Motion's made by Counselor Dwight?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Jarrett, discussion. Okay, seeing none, roll call, please, on first reading.
Counselor Thorpe?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Foster?
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett?
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge?
Counselor LaBarge, you are muted.
Is that better?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Maori?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan?
Yes.
And Counselor Shara?
Yes. That passes on first reading. Is, two readings have been requested, is there a motion to suspend rules?
Move to suspend the rules?
By Counselor Jarrett, seconded by Counselor LaBarge, suspend rules, any discussion on suspension of rules? Roll call, please, on suspending rules, Laura.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Foster?
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett?
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Maori?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
And Counselor Thorpe?
Yes.
Okay, rules are suspended.
Move second reading, please.
Second.
Motion was made by Counselor Dwight, seconded by Counselor Thorpe on second reading, any discussion on second reading? Seeing none, roll call, please, Laura.
Counselor Foster?
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett?
Yes.
Counselor LaBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Maori?
Yes.
Counselor Nash?
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan?
Yes.
Counselor Shara?
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe?
Yes.
And Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Okay, that passes in two readings. We are the now moving on to orders and we're up to 20.131. An administrative order to amend the city of North Hampton Administrative Code.
I would request a recess, if that's okay, just a brief recess?
Sure.
Did I beat it to that, Counselor Quinlan?
This is going to our council president to check. I just, I just got our council president to chat asking for it too.
Oh, I missed, um, okay, so it's nine oh nine, let's be back at nine fifteen.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I think it was important that we had the choice as a group to best to use the strengths of its members. So I would ask the mayor to instead propose that the tree warden become an ex officio voting member. With the opportunity to be elected chair if whoever is serving as the tree warden and the commission choose it. Additionally, adding a voting member from the planning department would help that department. Guide its process to balance our needs for trees with our needs for sustainable development. If we look at other municipalities, so the code looked at the administrative code for Cambridge, Massachusetts. So its code include included on its its commission would be a city arborist. A community development department member, a member of its open space committee. And it explicitly talks about how members of the public appointed are to be. Representative of as many of the various neighborhoods of the city as possible. So. There's just a lot built in there that adds to the democratic nature. And then the chair is elected from among its members. So I guess that those are my my comments on that. And I will hear from others now. Thank you.
Counsel of the bars and counselor Dwight. Oops, counsel about you're muted.
Okay now.
Yep, they're all set.
Thank you. I'm having a problem with this. And just hearing what Mr. Baskin had to say. And what Lillian had to say. I mean, has really opened my eyes on a situation here. And I I just feel that the Northampton Public Shadree Commission. What they had earned in two thousand nineteen, which was the Gold Leaf Award. From the International Society of the Horticultural New England Chapter. That tells me a lot. You're looking at an advisory committee that worked very tirelessly together. They communicated, they picked out their own chair, they had the tree warden working with them. And look what they accomplished here. I feel that the Northampton's mayor is proposing an administrative code change. Making the tree warden next to ex officio chair of the tree commission. It's a permanent change, a permanent change. That once approved by the council, it can't be undone unless proposed and voted on. By the current or future mayor slash our city council. You know, I I have a problem hearing how Lily Lombard apparently had talked. In reference to somebody Molly and I couldn't catch her last name. Of the Mass Department of Conservation and Recreation. Whose job it is to support tree committees and municipal urban forestry programs throughout the state. And I was trying to write as quick as I could and hearing what they were coming out and telling us counselors. I don't know, and she mentioned something about where Molly had made a statement in response to Will. But she didn't know of any tree committee set up that way formally. So mayor, I don't know, maybe could you answer that? If if that is.
Oh, um, I I haven't done that actual research, but I I. I'm actually a little bit shocked by my friend Lily Lombard because typically Lily Lombard wants the city to be. Out front and be a trailblazer on issues and wants the city to, you know, be different from everyone else. I I don't know. Just because Northampton may want to try a system that hasn't been tried anywhere else. I don't really understand why that is a bad thing. And actually, I I feel like we've evolved, it's sort of an evolution of our of our system. And so I I don't actually, you know, yeah, so Northampton may be the only one that wants to try this. And but I don't see that as a bad thing. So and generally, in my experience. Lily has wanted the city to push the envelope and be different and, you know, have the first. Community farm and do and do lots of things like that. So. Obviously, this is something she doesn't agree with, but the fact that we're differentiating ourselves from other communities. I don't see that as a bad thing. Where we have our own independent city, Cambridge and Northampton, while, you know. Politically aligned are somewhat different cities. With with different tree canopies and and different priorities, certainly different bank accounts to be sure. So that would be my response to that. I'm not really sure what other question you had counselor about it.
That was one big one for me, mayor.
Okay.
On the differences on that with other towns or whatever. It was mentioned also about the bylaws that this Molly, I don't know who this Molly is. She has seen typically speak to the composition of the board. Sometimes require a tree warden be a member ex officio or not. Cambridge Fall River, Newburyport, sometimes as an attendee in Salem. And sometimes they don't mention the tree warden at all in Columbus very, so I'm I'm a little confused here.
So 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 Molly is a state employee. She works for the Department of Conservation and Recreation and so she did. She is a contact point to cities and towns around the state. So. I wouldn't doubt that the information she has is correct and certainly every city and town has the right to configure. There's certainly no law preventing it and there's no law that delineates how a tree commission should be formed. It's not actually. Anything that's even in statute. The only thing that's in statute is that you have a tree warden. But there's nothing in statute that says you have a tree committee or a tree commission. Or a tree advisory body of any kind. And so it's really every individual city and town. Goes about it their own individual way. So I would, you know, this is the way that I proposed and. That Lily's the former chair. You've also heard from the current chair. Of the current elected chair tonight in Susan Loft House, who's the current chair of the commission. And you've heard from Rob Postle, who is somebody who's been involved as well. He's also a member of the commission. Who are both supporting this. So that's all I can say.
Right, because I think I did hear Lily Lombard say something about six other. Members also didn't agree. Of having the warden. Warden being the chair. I just have concerns of what I'm hearing here.
Yeah, I think she was referring that there's six other members because there's only six members on the commission right now. And that I I don't know who I I that three of them had expressed concerns. I don't know if you've received emails from them. Or if they've contacted you, but that's that's I think that's what she was referring to. So six of the six that there had been three that expressed concerns and obviously you've heard from two tonight who are supportive. I don't. I I didn't do a straw poll or anything like that. I don't know how it shakes out. And, you know, it's.
I just heard too, mayor, was in regards to. How the transparency or communication was not brought forth of this change. Can you talk about that?
Yeah, uh, you know, this wasn't this change when I submitted it. Actually, before I submitted, it was something that I asked. The tree warden to have communication with the commission about. It wasn't something that they were asked to vote on. Because it's not really, that's not how our, that's not how our process works. The committees and commissions don't. Form themselves or make votes about themselves. So it was not something that was, I don't think, put on an agenda to be voted on. Because that's not really how it works. But I know that the tree warden had conversations. With the with the board to let them know about this, about this pending change. So. And again, I I I didn't hear any any negative feedback and had been told that the current chair had supported it. Had been told that when it came time to even elect a vice chair. There were very few takers who wanted to be vice chair and it took them a while to figure out who wanted to be vice chair. So. Again, I also want to just stress to you that the chair of a multi-member body. Does not have any extra authority of any other member. And in fact, the body can only act as a body. The chair is not imbued with any special powers above and beyond. Now, they may think they are in some cases and but in but in reality. The chair is the person who's running the meeting, who's putting together the agenda between meetings. And and again, the will of the body is what controls. They don't have any extra votes. They have one vote on the body. So and oftentimes the chair is not as involved in the debate because they're often chairing the meeting. I don't, I can't speak to every how that works on every committee. So I'm the ex officio chair of the school committee and I'm, you know, I'm a voting member. And that's, you know, similar to the structure we set up with having. Wayne Fiden or the planning director be the ex officio chair of the plan of the Energy and Sustainability Commission. And having Donna be the ex officio chair of transportation and parking. Which I believe you supported last fall.
Reasons that they're professional, they deal with it, and that's why I supported that.
And and I'm making the same argument that our tree warden is a certified professional. And is deeply involved in the work of the commission and has attends all of their meetings. And in fact. You know, he is the person who is is the operational arm of the city's tree. Program by virtue of also being the superintendent of our forestry parks and cemetery division. And he's the one. You know, doing the overseeing tree plantings and working with volunteers. Also the budgetary issues that he works with the DPW director on. So. So there's a, so that's why I think there's value in having these collaborative committees. And and that's that's how I would differentiate.
Thank you.
I'm going to go to counselor Dwight, but first, counsel the barge, I feel like I could clarify what Lily said. Because I independently reached out to the six current members of the commission. And like Lily said, three expressed concerns and then three. Are are supportive of this administrative order. So.
We were supportive and what was the other?
So there's six current members and three had concerns and three were supportive. Two, two of whom were in the hearing tonight. Counselor Dwight, and then I saw a bunch of hands. I'll go to counselor Dwight and then we'll figure it out.
I I want to speak to the the larger philosophical conversation that Lily touched on among others. And it seems to be at the heart of what we're discussing. And and counselor Jared alludes to it as well. First of all, we have to be clear about what commissions are, particularly advisory commissions. They exist. And serve at the will of the mayor or the executive in this case, as we've established under our ordinances and under our charter. Cambridge is different. Cambridge has a completely different charter and a different executive structure. And as the mayor pointed out, a substantially different checkbook. The but more importantly, you know, the insinuation that. A meeting chaired by a staff member would somehow. Dampen and depress democratic process and engagement. Is discouraging to hear and I don't think it's predicated on fact. It disturbs me to suggest that this is some kind of nefarious power grab. This is actually what these commissions were for. This is what they were designed to do. The mayor makes and sets policy. We make laws. We have our own committees. To refer to and and ask to do deeper research, the pesticides grouping one among others. The this the mayor, these are advisors to the mayor. They don't have to be. And I'll be a gender specific because I don't know the other term for yes men. They don't have to nod their head like bobbleheads. And in fact, actually, we have very dynamic committees and commissions being chaired currently by staff. This is the mayor's choice for continuity of systems for. For a structure and I won't argue the efficacy of it one way or the other because it is not my committee. These are not my commissions. They don't advise me, although I certainly adhere and listen to their advice. But I think, you know, we had this fight. Earlier and Lily was quite as adamant the same way in our opposition for. Having the the planning director service the the chair of the Energy and Sustainability Committee. I have not heard of any issues that have resulted as that have. Been a result of that change, this this punitive power grab. That's the part that irks me the most is the the more sinister implications and insinuations. Because we're making false comparisons and I've heard other people making these in some in some of the letters too, these kind of. False equivalencies of what you see happening nationally and transferring it. And this happens so often to us locally. That is not the case here. It is not even close to the case. And it's frustrating because. We actually do very, very well. Now, to Lily's very credit, the reason the tree commission exists in very large part. Is due to her energy and advocacy. And her chairs, her chairship is has been marked as everyone's noted with considerable success and achievement. And I and I think that's in large part due to Lily's advocacy that would occur whether she were the chair or not. And one would presume that if you even had an elected chair, they could easily be dysfunctional and bad as well. And of course, I suppose the thought is that then the committee or commission could vote them out. Now, historically, looking back, once upon a time, Northampton had a less well-defined charter that described and assigned powers. And one of those systems that we had, which. Depending who you talk to, whether it was success or whether it was dysfunctional, was this fact that we had the Board of Public Works, which was. An unelected, unaccountable group and authority that could set fees and set rates and actually make rules and laws. They had no line of accountability. The people appointed to committees, their only line of accountability is through the authority that appoints them. That would be the mayor. And the same thing is the staff person also same line of accountability as we referred to. No one enjoys more power or less, I think, if you look at it. So I I I I. Appreciate people's concerns and I think the concerns are definitely legitimate and you know. The fact that we would lose the dynamism that's that's embodied in these citizen. Boards that are are people who are serving and volunteering their time. To offer their particular expertise or at least their thoughtful opinions. They also offer their agendas and that's fine. But the fact is, as I said, there is no accountability for their agendas if their agendas usurp. Authority. If they start assuming authority they don't possess. And that worries me. Advice is what the mayor seeks. The mayor is not going to sabotage a committee that he needs. It doesn't make any sense. So to suggest that the committee would be diminished or sabotaged or perverted in any way. By having the quali- highly qualified staff member in each one of these instances. Chair the meeting seems to me to be perfectly reasonable request. And as such, I'm prepared to vote in favor.
Thank you. Um, I I'm gonna go to counselor Nash and counselor Mary. I'll just, I just want to note that we should also credit Lily with. Making sure that we have an appointed tree warden. She really, really fought for that position because it is such an important position. To have in the city, to have someone who's devoted and responsible for public trees.
Yeah, I just, I do have to correct the record there and Lily's gonna laugh, but she actually. Didn't like the appointed tree warden that I had set up and actually urged the council to vote against it. So she didn't. Ironically, I she may go back in time and change that opinion, but she actually lobbied this council hard to not to actually. Vote down the tree commission and vote down the tree warden position in the original administrative order. So I just, I have to correct the record there. She very strenuously felt that it should not be a DPW staff person. Who should be the tree warden. And yeah, so I just.
No, that's okay. I recognize that correction. I was, what I was referring to is that she really pushed for us to have a tree. I wasn't talking about. But she worked. For there to be a tree warden in the city. Okay, it was counselor Nash and counselor Mayori.
Thank you, Council President. So. The, we're having this discussion about one of the most successful. Committees and programs that's gone on in my memory of of the city. That 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 this is like, it feels like the first controversy to ever come out of. What has been almost a joyful process of planting trees. And and, you know, it's a mixture of trees getting planted, volunteers showing up. I'm sure all of us have participated in one way or another with planting trees as part of this process around the city. It's, you know, every year that you you see the trees that have been planted. They they're getting bigger, they're becoming increasingly a part of the 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 streetscape around the city. It's it's making our our city gradually become even more beautiful than it is. And it's it's just been a terrific initiative. And I I also, I I want to, you know, recognize all of the work that Lily's done around this. It's, you know, she has been. A very vocal advocate and she's done that from the chair. And and I also know that, you know, and I I think with counselor Dwight's point that. Yeah, she would be doing that whether she was the chair or not, you know, and that is one of the. The great attributes of Lily is that she's and when she's an advocate, she's in the room and she's. And she made some very good arguments tonight as to. Should consider keeping things the way they are. But, you know, from from my vantage, that it is the mayor's prerogative. To make these decisions. He is the elected official here. He's the person who's where the democratic process is is has given him the authority to do this. And that the other thing is that when we look at the committees that operate in this way. I I've heard no complaints that that when we when we have committees that are organized. And chaired and agendas made and led by city staff. That I haven't heard any other complaints about that process. And that and to this point, our city staff have been really great in including people. One of the the meetings that, you know, I I try to regularly attend is biking ped. Which Wayne holds at seven thirty in the morning to really, I guess, to keep numbers down or but it it's. The people who show up for that meeting are very dedicated and that and that. That people are welcome to engage in the discussion. It's it's very lively discussion for seven thirty in the morning. And that it's 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 been a model of how. This kind of arrangement can work. I do think that this is this is different from. My reasoning for supporting the the move with the TPC last year. TPC did that it 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 was a bit unwieldy with all of the administrators in the room. And and I think that having. The DPW director chairing that along with the vice chair being the chief of police. But I I we've had successfully had committees that are happening right now that follow this model. And that and things are getting done, positive work is happening and. And so based on that, I I I I don't see anything terrible happening with what's currently going on with. Our committees that are structured like this. So I I think that, you know, the the mayor is recommending this and. I intend to support this order. Thank you.
You, counselor Mayori was next.
Yeah, hi. So right, I also have to just thank that each member of the tree commission. It is like. It's such a delightful kind of soul nourishing mission and every. And maybe that kind of work leads, I don't know if you get these delightful people. Or if it's doing this wonderful thing of planting trees brings out people, you know. Part of them, but everyone I've met on there has been just really stellar. So thank you for that. Thank you to all of you. And I, you know, what I'm seeing is this highly effective commission. So whatever you're all doing, please do continue with that. And I guess that kind of leads to why, you know. I guess I don't really still understand what problem we are trying to solve. I'm certainly, the name change is a whole other thing, but. I, you know, Rich Parsletti is exemplary in his role and I'm I'm sure he'd make a fine share. So then why not let the commission vote for that if that is so? Why not trust them to make that choice? What, you know, what can we imagine is the difference in morale between members vote on their chair as opposed to having. From above. I really do hear what Sue and Rob are saying. I really respect their opinion on this. Like what I'm also hearing is that the issues that they brought up would be addressed by the tree warden being a voting ex officio member. You know, I would say that in general, ideally, all all our municipal bodies would have admin support. And I think that's something they can all use, that's separate. So I I. So I think I think the voting member, you know, I think if. If there's nothing special about the chair, then then why is, why are we here? I think there is something about the chair. The mayor brought up the chair, the current chair often and her title. So clearly there is something here about the chair. And if it were the mayor's prerogative, then we wouldn't be here voting on it. So it's really, it is, you know, it is part of our responsibility to look at this. And I would just also want to say that the letters I read, I read the letter, the three letters as not supportive, not just having concerns. But and I have heard complaints actually on on boards with permanent chairs. You know, I think there's, you know, why make these changes permanent when committee members can simply vote for them? That's a question we need to answer before we vote on this. There are a myriad of reasons volunteer residents finally serve on municipal boards and committees. Commissions, but leave them. It's representation, it's community transparency, it's I am. It's building community leadership, building leaders in our community on these issues. It's community leaders who can be more effective at integrating into the community and promoting these issues. You know, staff members don't even necessarily live here. I I think, you know, Rich is exceptional and our mayor is exceptional, but we need to really think. This is the permanent, we have to think about the future when there might not be a Rich Parsletti or there might not be a Mayor Narcoitz. You know, the whole point of resident populated boards and committees is to achieve a dynamic power balance. And to have that outside perspective. And we are very fortunate in Northampton to have a rich pool of community talent. So why not, you know, offer our committee members a chance to hone their leadership skill? I think there's risks here, but the risk, I I think, you know, I I will respectfully disagree with counselor Dwight. I think there is, I think, good management, in in good management, you you give authority and responsibility in the same hand. So I think you do have the risk of deflating. I think it can be deflating to serve on, you know, a board and not know and have no chance of having any leadership role. And not only that, know that your opinion about who should be is irrelevant. Engagement, there's a risk of not feeling truly represented. And also I think there's a risk of a frankly of a passive, the staff will just do it attitude. That can change the way people approach their work on boards and committees and commissions. I do believe there are times to make these trade-offs, you know, because paid professional leaders are needed sometimes in these positions. But with an award-winning commission that has continually demonstrated its effectiveness. With the structure as it is, is this really one of those times? When we make changes. By giving them authority and the responsibility, that locus of control. You know, particularly for volunteers who don't have any of the motivation of being paid, you know. I just think it helps retain membership and it's good for our city. So I also want to just, you know, say that. That, you know, when you think about who is typically moving forward, who are who are going to be these professionals? Who are going to. People are we, when we prioritize perceived efficiency and professionalism over equitable access. To positions of power in our city. over equitable access to positions of power in our city, are we encouraging residents from underrepresented groups to get involved and serve? You know, what message are we sending our residents about our faith in them? Thank you.
Thank you. I see Counselor Labarge and then Counselor Quinlan.
I'll let Counselor Quinlan go ahead and speak because I did already, I'll do after.
Thank you for that. Counselor Quinlan.
Thank you, thank you, Counselor Labarge as well. You know, this is a, this has been a, a really interesting topic to, to explore. You know, I, I think, you know, Councillors Jarrett, Foster, Mayory and I were all sitting in relatively close proximity to each other back in December when the previous admin code changes were proposed and approved. So it was kind of a, an interesting sort of hypothetical to consider at that time. You know, and, and it, it gave me some thoughts to draw back on this week. And, and I've had a number of phone calls and emails like, like you all have too. Some, you know, on one side and some on the other. And I, and I've really twisted this week about what's the right choice here? You know, I voted to approve the hiring of a city clerk as opposed to electing a city clerk because I believe in chain of command. I believe that actually is going to give the people of North Hampton a better opportunity to stand up when they don't feel they're being served and, and ask for better service through accountability of the executive. You know, I also voted with you all to approve 16 and 17 year olds having the right to, to vote in our elections because they're going to be here longer than us. They're about the future. And so with both of those things, I, I felt conflicted with this specific idea because, you know, I believe in the chain of command. Is, is having the person who runs the operational arm of the, the planting of the trees and our tree canopy and so forth, leading the commission that, that advises that man, that person, I should say, you know, is that a muddying of the chain of command? Is, is that, is that confusing? And, and I think, I think it is. I, I work in a company that, that has 11,000 employees and there's a very clear chain of command for a reason. And, and we're not talking about that large of a group, but I just, for my own personal thing, I do respect the chain of command. The other thing too, and, and I, I felt that, that what we heard tonight from a couple of different people, and, and I know Alex, Counselor Jarrett said it as well, making the, the tree warden a, a voting member and then allowing, you know, that person to, to go forth and participate in the discussion fully and vote, you know, and, and help kind of craft the, the idea. I'm sure that the tree warden is a vital discussion member in, in meetings, right? Because this is the expert, as has been pointed out. But, you know, I, I'm left feeling that, you know, if the chair really doesn't have any extra power, then, then why this push? Why are, why are we getting this push to make it this specific person? You know, as I, as I kind of dissected everything throughout the week, I, I was left feeling, you know, the other thing that I, that I, that came to a lot was the precedent. You know, in the very same meeting in December where the changes were approved, the, you know, the second reading of the safe cities ordinance came about. And what was the importance of the safe cities ordinance? We heard from the councillors in that meeting, really in the first discussion two weeks prior, that right now we have a proclamation from our mayor declaring us a sanctuary city. Safe cities puts it so that it's not that easy to overturn for one person with a stroke of a pen to overturn that. Now it requires move, movement by the legislative branch. And, you know, and the reasoning is because, well, like, like Counselor Mayory said a few minutes ago, in, in years down the road, the nine of us aren't going to be here. This mayor isn't going to be the mayor. And if you have a mayor that hires Paul Bunyan as the tree warden, you know, you're going to have some concerns. And while I, while I agree on the broad scope of what Councillors Nash and Dwight talked about in terms of the power, this is, you know, this is North Hampton, this is a mayor with the best intentions, I do feel that, you know, ceding more control to the executive puts, puts us in a position where it becomes difficult to overturn. And you don't mind that when you agree with the person. And in this particular mayor, I have tremendous confidence and I, and I have tremendous admiration. But that doesn't mean you always will in the executive. And so thinking of the future, this is really hard. This is, this is, and, and to be completely frank, at this moment, I, I'm, I'm still confused as to what the right way to vote on this is because there is some upside to this. We, we've seen, you know, very credible members of this commission say, this is a good move for this commission, this is a good way for us to go. And I respect their opinion as, as people being right in the mix here. So there is some confusion. Lastly, I just want to say that as you think about these things, and again, when I, when I looked at this and said, the, you know, that I have a lot of respect for this, for this mayor, I also have a lot of respect for this tree warden. I've had occasion to call him or email him a number of times and he's been nothing but professional, courteous, very responsive. And when the people of North Hampton, people of Ward One have reached out to me to tell me that they've had an interaction with him, no one ever has anything but absolutely stellar things to say about our current tree warden. But again, it's not about today, it's about the future. So, you know, I'm going to listen a little bit more before we, we take a vote and, and try to figure out which way to go here. Because I do think there's a lot of reason for us to say, yes, let's give the tree warden a vote on this commission. But there's not a, a ton of reason that convinces me that he needs to make up the agenda. Thank you.
Counselor Dwight?
Um, to, to, all good points and, and to, first of consequence concern about the permanence. I mean, everyone should know that there is no such thing as permanence in particularly in administrative orders or the administrative orders stand with the administration. Same thing, equivalent of an executive order. The same thing with laws, the same thing with rules, even resolutions, depending on who is elected and who is serving. So, so if we're going to subscribe to the democratic processes, the people who are held to account, to accounts by being elected or representing the people who elected them. That's, and so when we're talking about, you know, the positions of power, as Counselor Mayory referred to, in, you know, basically investing power in the citizenry to participate and become engaged and to, this would be a proving ground or a, a school, if you will, for, for training future leaders in the community. That's not what this is for, unfortunately. Maybe, maybe not. I mean, that's probably an, that is an added benefit. But to be perfectly honest, I haven't seen a lot of people moved on from those committees and then moved into positions of accountability. And when I say that, I mean elected positions. So the, that's always been my concern because, you know, ultimately, you're supposed to answer to the voters, the citizens in the main. Now, one person who presides over one committee, for instance, who's unelected, can advance, and if we are going to say that they're vested with significant authority that they were having, that's forcing this debate, then they, without being held to accounts, can actually also distort that authority and advance their agenda without, without being called to accounts by, through an election. And that's the part that always, and, and, and mind you, I acknowledge that we have various structures for various types of committees and the purposes they serve. The mayor had mentioned several of them, one of the planning board, which their boards, that's a board that we just saw tonight, can actually disperse escrow funds based on conforming. Now, most committees, the youth commission, which was brought up as well, which is actually an anomaly committee to be, to be sure, because that's a holdover predating the charter, the new charter. Those other committees that do not have the same semblance of order that the mayor is asking for tonight in this particular committee. But I do see, yes, if, if we want to identify a trend, the mayor is trending towards conformity to a standard that he's establishing. I'm not arguing that order one way or the other. That's not a point I'm, I'm going to argue with. I'm going to argue with the fact that this is the, this is the mayor's prerogative. We are charged with authority and oversight of that prerogative and we can vote this down and America come back with something else. But point in fact, I haven't heard anything other than, nothing compelling enough to make me think that it should be overridden, his desire to actually have this form of structure that he feels would benefit him or benefit the advice that he is asking for from these committees. I, I, I've heard a lot of ifs and maybes, how the, how people would feel discouraged and just not feel as engaged or as empowered if they are part of these committees. I've seen no evidence of that though, of any committees that actually currently serve under those systems. I've heard lots of vigorous pushback on a number of issues, including coming from the mayor's office. They've seen, shown no reluctance or compulsion to bend to his will. And in fact, this is a perfect example because here you have the former chair rising up to challenge the mayor's will in this particular case. I, but beyond that, we've all acknowledged that all these committees actually, I, I actually, you know, we, we've gone on to commend the work of this committee as we should. But that's not to take anything away from all the other committees that currently serve under these, this same structure that the mayor has already requested. And I have not seen any evidence that indicates the concerns that have been expressed. We can't, if you're going to, if you're going to deny this request based on the possibility that someone will feel politically cowed or diminished in any way, I think you're going to need more evidence. I think it's appropriate to have more evidence than just speculation at this point. Because this is, you know, I, I, I'll just leave it at that. I'll leave it at that.
I'm going to go to Counselor Thorp, but I'm going to just note, in the interest of time, to maybe save four councillors doing this for themselves, I'm going to note that there are actually four current councillors who were previously on committees or commissions. So I, I know that they would all like to make that point, that they did actually move from being a resident on a committee or commission to now being in elected office. Though I don't believe any-
The mayor as well.
Sorry?
The mayor's, and the mayor as well, noted.
Yes. I, I don't think any of them were chairs, they can correct me if I'm wrong, but I just wanted to make that note. Mayor Narcoitz? Wait, you're muted.
I was saying I was the chair, sorry.
Okay, except for the mayor who was the chair. Okay, Counselor Thorp.
Up the TPC, which has now been made an ex officio.
I'm sorry, Counselor Thorp has the floor.
Also?
Yes.
Thank you. So like Counselor Quinlan noted earlier, I'd like to thank all of the councillors for what they've said. I wrestled with this too. And, you know, it was to the point, I think, yesterday where I was kind of like, okay, I'm hearing a lot of positive responses regarding this proposal. And then I get or hear that there's three members of the Public Shade Tree Commission that are opposed to it, which gave me some pause. And I think like all of us who've seen some emails or gotten these emails, we've had those who are opposing and we've heard from them that they should, the public shade, the Public Shade Tree Commission should maintain its independent advisory role. Excuse me. A future mayor would not be supportive of the Public Shade Tree Commission. There were concerns around lessening the shade tree power. This is an overreach of the executive branch. But I've also heard from the proponents, which was, which was good to hear, that the commission, you know, should be led by someone who is a tree professional and the tree warden we have is, is great at what, you know, he, he does. And the commission is great at what they do. And, you know, to all the city tree, the work goes through the tree warden as it is and the commission is already subject to the mayor's approval. But I do see some, you know, justification in what Mr., you know, Counselor Jarrett said earlier is, you know, you know, make it so that the tree warden is elected by the members of the tree commission. So I've been weighing this, going back and forth, and it's, it's, it's not easy. I hear everyone, I respect Lily Lombard and I respect her coming here and, and her, her advocacy on behalf of the tree commission. So however I vote, realize that I've heard everyone and I'm going to vote in the way that I feel is best for the city and the people, the members who are on the committee. Thank you.
Counselor Foster?
Thank you. It's been this, I've, I've definitely wrestled with this since, since I saw it was going to be on our agenda quite a bit. And have really appreciated the discussion here tonight. Counselor Quinlan, I especially appreciate your honesty around, you know, sort of truly still making up your mind. And that's, as I've gone through this, you know, I, I didn't enter tonight with, with my mind made up. One of the things I did want to add with this discussion is that serving on the City Services Committee was actually my, my first choice when our council president was making committee assignments. And my reason for that is something Counselor Mayory alluded to, but the idea of our government, we talk about this at City Services certain times when we're looking at appointments, but when you're serving on a board or commission, our city government isn't them, it's us. And I think that this opportunity for people to serve, potentially to take on leadership roles, allows some of that distrust that Counselor Dwight alluded to or actually named very, very specifically, but that reflects a distrust of government that people have. And I'll tell you that the more I serve here in North Hampton, the more I see good intentions all around me. And it, and it's really pretty amazing to be a part of, of this level of service in this community. And I think that the more we allow or encourage and pull people into that fold of serving, the more you get to know the city employees, you start to, you know, advocate for something and then see it happens and that's a pretty amazing feeling. So I just wanted to name that that's, that idea of making the tree warden a voting member of the commission is something I wholeheartedly support. I see the practical side of why making the tree warden the ex officio chair makes sense practically. The idealist in me is less comfortable with the practical piece of that. So that's what I'm adding and similar to what Counselor Thorp said, however, I ended voting tonight, I just, I've heard from people on both sides who I deeply respect. This is a challenging question.
Mayor Narcoitz?
I didn't really want to add anymore to the substance of the debate. I, I did just want to make one correction to the record and that was several times tonight I've heard that the Public Shade Tree Commission won a Gold Leaf Award. And actually, the award was awarded to the city of North Hampton, the Public Shade Tree Commission and Tree North Hampton. It was actually awarded to sort of all the, all three organizations for the cumulative work that had been done in the city of North Hampton. So I just wanted to make sure that that was understood so that, you know, Tree North Hampton's work and as well as the, the work of the tree warden were not being minimized in that award. So, and I think it speaks to the collaborative nature of the, the collaboration between the citizen volunteers on Tree North Hampton and the work of the Shade Tree Commission and the tree warden.
Did I, Counselor Labarge, did I see your hand? I can't, you're off camera. Yeah, okay, Counselor Labarge?
I wanted to make sure everybody spoke.
I, I think just about everyone has. Go ahead.
But anyways, I, I have to say that Richard Parsletti, like I said, I've known him for quite a long time. He's extremely respectful. Many people that I've had Richard meet in Ward Six thought he was just a great, great employee of the Department of Public Works. And that's not my issue here. My issue is that apparently this advisory committee for how many years now? for how many years now, four years, going on, working hard, and they had selected their own chair. And it has not been a problem. So I feel with due respect, it has been doing the way it should be operating, everybody getting along with each other, making decisions. So I have to feel like what councillor Alex Jarrett has stated, I just heard Rachel Meior also come out and say that I feel that this advisory committee and whoever is on it, they should have the rights to vote for who they would like to make chair. That's how I feel about this. And I felt about this right from the beginning on it. And that's it. That's how I feel about it. I just feel that why break up something when it's been very, very successful? And yes, I do have concerns here of having Richard Parsletti coming in as the ex officio of this commission when it's been running very, very well. So that's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor, I see, oh, I see councillor Dwight and councillor Mayori.
So I I don't know if I'm recognized, am I recognized?
You are. Yeah, councillor Mayori, you're, you're kind of freezing a bit. So you get sort of stuck in a position. So it's hard for me to see what you're doing, like whether you're raising your hand or not.
Yeah, I was. I'm gonna turn off my camera to try to boost the internet there.
Okay, okay.
And you're, yes, councillor Dwight first. I just wanted to know if you could hear me. Thank you.
I think that that's better. Okay, I'm gonna go to councillor, then I'll go to you.
You know, to the the point about, you know, the executive overreach, it should be, it's worth noting that every appointee on these committees is appointed by the mayor. The mayor makes the appointments. They're in that some strange way or possibly could be construed as being beholden or their decisions somehow influenced by that choice. And they are approved by us one way or the other. So and as to fixing a problem, I don't think this is ever presented as fixing a problem. Presented as the mayor actually making a systemic, a mildly systemic hierarchical change that is his right and do for his advisory committee. Now, by the way, when we create our advisory committees, the mayor has no say. So who are we assigned? Who gets to be chair? How even the meetings are conducted? That's on us. But we do actually do have some say. So I think we should consider that we have been granted this power and authority over him that he does not possess over us. And as such, there comes with that. So we have to be fairly responsible is how we administer. The and again, you know, the issue of permanence is everything changes. And in fact, actually, as councillor Labarge has pointed out, that the committee's done amazingly well without Rich Parsletti as chair. Well, the fact is, it's done amazingly well under the former chair, Lily Lombard. But emphasis on the point of former, she's not the chair anymore. The chair has changed. Sue Loftus is now the chair. And I have no doubt that while under her, in her tenure, she will do just as well in different fashion until such time if this, this administrative order is approved, that Rich will do as well, but probably not in the same way. They're different people. That's part of the strength of this diversity, right? The positions, we do vote on these things based on the position, not on the individuals, and that's appropriate. But insofar as that this is, as I said, in administrative order, there is no such thing as permanence. And in fact, the next mayor could come in and be a real jerk and decide that we don't need a tree committee. This is silly and get rid of it. And get rid of the Energy and Sustainability Committee and get rid of all, any and all of those. And that person would be in their position because they received the majority of votes and by the citizens of Northampton, thereby supposedly projecting their will in some way. So and when, if we find that person to be bad enough and too much of a jerk, then we vote them out. If the problem is, the thing that I've taken issue with, as I said, it's largely philosophical thing, is the suggestion and implication by some, not by all, by any means, but by some suggesting there's something nefarious in this. Power grab, an executive overreach, the the somehow perverting and destroying the concept and precepts of democracy here in the city of Northampton. And I am deeply offended by that implication and suggestion that is wholly inappropriate. And I think part of the cynicism that we're describing and discussing, because that certainly exists. It's been cultivated for a very, very long time. Intentionally. And it takes, it is taking seed here in Northampton as well. There is a great deal of cynicism and skepticism about us about any, once you take an oath, you're suddenly, you are sinister. And thereby you are an authority that needs to be challenged. And this is, this conversation just feels like an extension of that kind of attitude. That's sort of amplifying cynicism in some way. So yeah, I think, I assume we're gonna vote soon, and I hope we do. And I, and I hope that the majority agree with me, but in the end, if it fails, then we move on. But I think this is something that I'm actually somewhat grateful for the opportunity to have this conversation, because it really doesn't come up much when we have discussions on other issues. And this, this is always sort of a it sort of bugged me in my entire tenure as a councillor. This, this attitude of you know, we're in conflict and competitive and someone who is vested with the disproportionate balance of authority is thereby considered someone who must be challenged at every turn. And that's disappointing, because all the people that I've managed to work with in the executive position are very fortunate have to a person been exemplary souls and very good shepherds. And that, and that, and I say that's true of this mayor. And he and I have disagreed on any number of other issues and with the same amount of vehemence that I'm expressing today. But I think I just want us to keep in mind what our charge is, why it is, why we're given, why we have been granted this authority, we granted it to ourselves. And we are thereby charged to be very circumspect in how we administer it.
Councillor Mayori?
Yeah, let me know if I start going it out. I'll put my
You're already a little
Okay, let me turn it off. Is that better?
Yes.
Okay, great. Yeah, no, I am curious about that councillor Dwight, because I actually haven't heard that, at least among councillors, what you were just referring to in terms of our cynical feeling about. Perhaps it's something that's come up before, but that's not what I've been hearing tonight. I've heard very specific concerns. I do want to just tell you that I have heard complaints and I personally have complaints as a woman sometimes on these board. And outsiders can feel like that our city be, the perception can be, maybe this is what you're referring to, is kind of clickish and kind of keeping some certain people out. Whether that's true or not, I I have heard complaints and I feel like it does make a difference. And I I will be honest, I I respect Wayne and Chris on the Sustainability Commission, but I feel there's a different tenor to it now that there's no chance of any of the residents on there taking that leadership position. So I think that it's not just speculation from my point of view. I just wanted to say that part. I wholeheartedly agree that that Parsletti and the tree warden in general should be an ex officio voting member. I, you know, I've also heard that half of that commission does not support this permanent change. So I guess I'm back to the what I still haven't, hasn't been answered is why not let this incredibly competent commission vote on who their chair is?
Um, councillor Jarrett?
Thank you. Yeah, I guess I just wanted to reiterate, I don't think there's any nefarious or not reiterate, but say rather that I don't think there's any nefarious or sinister plot here. But that, you know, I'm, I come on, on the side of of increased self determination. And I think the, and it's clear that, you know, we are, this is the mayor's prerogative with our approval. It is, we, we get to weigh in. We get to say yes or no. The mayor, you know, does need to convince us that this is a, a good plan for the city. And the mayor holds the members of the boards and commissions accountable. And the mayor can remove them if, if, and that is, that is the case, if he chooses. So I think though that ultimately it's a small amount of consolidation of power, of, you know, of additional power. But it's one that we should pay attention to. And it's one that I would prefer to be on the side of of self determination of those boards and commissions. So that's, that's my, my preference there. And I guess a question I have for the mayor is, you know, is this a trend? Do you plan, do you have other commissions or boards or committees that you would plan to to move and have be chaired by staff?
Um, I, I don't, I think it's, I can't really think of, you know, the, the, the been discussing, the folks have been talking about the tree warden a little bit tonight. And I mean, the tree warden, I'm fairly certain has been at and an active participant in all these meetings. So he's been right in the thick of this. So much like the way that, you know, staff are involved in energy and sustainability and much like they're involved in in, you know, transportation and parking. And so I just feel like these are key policy committees that, that that are different than some of our other ones. You know, for example, I don't, I don't know. I don't know of any other committees that would be analogous to these three. So I don't, I don't have any plans. And this was, as is often the case. We take a look at things when we're about to make other changes. It's an opportunity to look at, are there any other changes we want to make? And this was a change that was, we were talking about changing the name. And so we thought about, well, what would we want to do? Is there any other changes we want to make in terms of membership or structure? And so that's really how this came about. So very organically. And so I, it's, but again, I was trying to align it with those other two committees. And, you know, we do have competent, you know, department leaders, male and female, who, who are in these positions. And and so, you know, having made this move with two other city subject matter experts, the thought was, should the same thing happen to this subject matter expert? And so that was really the rationale. So, yeah.
Just one more question for the mayor, if I may. And so why not let the commission make, you know, make the, make Rich, or rather, the tree warden a voting member and let the commission, you know, vote him to be the chair to ratify that, to make, you know, to know that we have, have the commissions, that he has the commissions backing, I guess, it's a as chair.
Yeah, I think part of the, part of the rationale when I made the changes for the TPC and, and to a lesser extent, the NESC, although I was making them because they were both, I mean, almost, I mean, literally were carbon copies of each other. You know, was again, the, the concept that there, there is sometimes some confusion around the role of the commission and the, and the, and the and the, you know, the actual authority of the commission and the advisory role of the commission. And so and so that was one of the reasons why, actually, I mean, I will tell you that I served on TPC, I started as a citizen member. I was actually one of the first citizens to ever serve on TPC when it was created, appointed by Mayor Higgins. And, and there were councillors and there were department heads and there were citizens. And it was always for the longest time, the rule was that like the, the, the city staff should never chair. And the councillors, I guess, should never chair. And I don't know, for a while, we sort of went around and around. Eventually, it was like, okay, councillors can chair. And then it, but the challenge was always that the perception to the public about what the authority of the committee was, or what the power of the committee was, or what the role of the committee was sometimes got confusing to people. So I guess my, my view on that has changed. Especially with TPC and especially, you know, with NESC. That, that, again, having the, I mean, right now, the DPW by this administrative order provides staff support to the commission in terms of administrative support. And obviously, the tree warden has been, you know, we've been having him attend all of the meetings and so that he can participate in the meetings. This is above and beyond his normal work and outside of his normal work. And so, you know, that was really the rationale is why I thought that he should be, he, that I wanted to give him that same status that these other department heads have been given on these committees that were areas of their subject matter expertise. So that was the rationale. Not that there was something unique about, about tree warden. And again, I also just want to say that, you know, there's been a lot of discussion about the incredible accomplishments that the city has made. And I don't in any way want to diminish the tree commission in any way. But I mean, when I introduced the, the, you know, the, the idea of having free public shade tree commission and also a tree warden, I also quadrupled the budget for trees in the city. I mean, that was the, I mean, you can have a commission that talks about trees all day long, but if the city doesn't actually put the resources behind it and fund it and fund the trees, I mean, all of these trees that are being planted are paid for by the city. And, and, you know, we've, we've increased staff. We've increased equipment. We bought, you know, new equipment for trees. And obviously, we've tried to give the tree warden the tools that he needs. And again, beyond the stuff that's happening on the commission, he's also managing, is in charge of by statute, every tree in the public way in the city, which again, the tree commission has no authority over. So, and so again, I want to just keep this in perspective that I, I wholeheartedly agree. And I think the Silver, the Silver Leaf Award demonstrates that the City of Northampton's work, the tree commission's work, and then all the community volunteers sort of together symbiotically is what has created this incredible turnaround in terms of our shade tree canopy. It hasn't been just the commission or Tree Northampton or the, or the tree warden. So anyway, I just wanted to sort of, while I had the floor, you know, correct that, because there's a really, there's also a fiscal part of this and a commitment by the administration and by the DPW to trees that has really also played an important role. Including, you know, the grants have been mentioned. Well, those are grants that go to municipalities. And so, you know, our, our willingness to be part of that and involved in that obviously is critical as well. So that's the best I can give you councillor.
Thank you.
Councillor Dwight?
Just, just a quick example, I served under two chairs at the Energy and Sustainability Committee, both elected citizens who never set the agenda. The agenda and the meeting was led by Chris, who city employee who had no voting authority, but he was essentially, and it wasn't even established by statute or administrative order. He was the de facto chair. He set the agenda. He led the, he, he led the meeting. He called and recognized people as they went through. So in, in, and I won't mention any names, but the last chair, when, when it came up, when we had this debate for energy when we had this debate for energy and sustainability, I had asked in the meeting, in the course of meeting, does anyone actually know who the chair is? Does anyone remember who the chair is? And there was a little bit of discussion, some people said, I, one person said, I think I might be, and the other person said, I'm pretty sure it was me. And the point being that, that actually, and in fact, he was in the midst of all of that, that we were having the discussion that Lily had referred to about the Youth Commission coming and representing, and a number of other agencies and groups and community groups come and arguing that the, the, the plans that were being proposed were moving way too fast and needed to be brought back and re-discussed under the nebulous, nebulously identified chair. It didn't, it didn't, in any way, by having a staff member manage and control this, obviously, there were very strong voices that were speaking out emphatically and debating throughout the whole thing, while being basically chaired and recognized by a staff person. So I, you know, I actually understand and can even appreciate the suggestion that this would either somehow, as I said, dampen enthusiasm for citizen participation, or, on the other hand, certainly not promote it. And I actually, so far, and this is anecdotal, but I've seen no evidence to that effect, and I've not seen it through the course of my, my tenure. And so I'm just saying, I think, I think the concerns there are overstated, I'll say.
I, you know, I, we've been drawing these parallels, or sort of putting this, putting the Tree Commission in a group with these other two commissions, which I think makes sense, but there's something that I note for myself that I think is a really key difference between this commission, the Tree Commission, and Energy and Sustainability, and Transportation and Parking, which is that those two commissions have, at least half, if not a majority of their member, of their voting members are city staff, you know, department heads, or elected officials, and they have some representation by residents, but they have very heavy representation by the city. On the other hand, this commission has, will have six resident members and one voting staff person. So I think that that's a really key difference, so this sort of idea that, that power is being taken away from the residents doesn't really hold for me, and because they will vast, by vast majority, have the majority of, you know, the vote on, on this mission, regardless of who is chair. The other thing that, and this is kind of just a recommendation maybe to the commission, is I don't know if they have rules that they've voted on. If they do, they aren't publicly posted anywhere, I haven't been able to see them, but, you know, it says in the Charter that each, so for multiple member bodies, it says, each appointed member, appointed multiple member body shall determine its own rules and order of business within the bounds of any applicable ordinance that created it. So if there's a concern on the commission that a chair may, let's say, decline to put something on the agenda, or may control the agenda too closely, I would suggest, you know, the commission can create their own rules, like the council has created rules, that, that protect against that, where if, if they feel like the chair is not putting something on the agenda, you can have a rule that then allows for a petitioning for the next meeting, to have something sort of forced on the agenda. So I think that that's something they could certainly look at if that's a concern for them. So, those are my thoughts. I don't really understand the, also the concern about the, having the Tree Warden sort of be the representative of the body, or be the person who might present to, say, us or, or another committee or commission. I think that the Tree Warden is an absolutely appropriate person to hear from on these issues, as the foremost expert and the person who is really responsible for, for the public trees. So those are, those are some of my thoughts. Any, any other thoughts or discussion? Okay. Seeing none, except for whatever that sound was. Roll call, Laura, are you here? Okay. It's okay. Roll call, please.
Councillor Jarrett.
No.
Councillor Labarge.
No.
Councillor Mayory.
No.
Councillor Nash.
Yes.
Councillor Quinlan.
Pass.
Councillor Shara.
Yes.
Councillor Thorpe.
Yes.
Councillor Dwight.
Yes.
Councillor Foster.
No.
And then back to Councillor Quinlan.
Yes.
I believe that was five yeses.
Five yes and four no.
Okay, so that passes, I'll remind everyone, according to our rules, these only get one reading. So that passes in first and only reading. Okay, next, we do not have any ordinances, we're moving, oh, so we do not have, yes, we do have ordinances. Moving on to ordinances, 20.14, an ordinance relative to parking on Bridge Street, this is the second reading.
Move approval, please.
Motion's been made by Councillor Dwight, who was the second?
Thorpe.
Any discussion on second reading? Councillor Nash.
Yeah, so I know I spoke about, at length last time, about these two matters related to parking in Ward Three, but there's two additional pieces of information, well, actually, the important piece of information, that the, all of this was, happened due to changes that went on at the, at the depot parking lot. And one of the critical things that I found out while researching to support these, these two ordinances, is that, that there was people, there was a perception, and actually, there were people who reside at Live 155, who were parking in the depot lot overnight, and that, that I, I did specific outreach with the building management to make sure that, that anybody who parked there found other ways to park, residents at Live 155 can be, there are some market rate apartments there, but there's also a lot of subsidized rates as well. And the, the feedback I got from Live 155, Live 150, no, Live 155, I never say it right, was...
Is this, this is, we're doing Bridge Street right now.
Right, this has, so the Bridge Street ordinance, this, this need to create the long-term parking had to do with the changes at the depot lot.
My apologies, I thought maybe we would skip to Pleasant Street, okay, go ahead.
And, and so, but, the, the message is that while people were displaced, that the management, and, and after I spoke to him several times about this, management did not report that anybody had, was, had any hardship going on, and, and that I know that you, Councillor Shara, and I had talked about, that was one of our concerns there, and that, so, anyway, that, that was just, I, I thought that was an important piece of information, and all of the, the, the footwork and research I had done around that, that people were not impacted, people who, of lower income were not marginally impacted here.
Thank you for sharing that. Any other questions or comments? Okay, roll call, please, Laura.
Councillor Labarge.
Yes.
Councillor Mayory.
Yes.
Councillor Nash.
Yes.
Councillor Quinlan.
Yes.
Councillor Shara.
Yes.
Councillor Thorpe.
Yes.
Councillor Dwight.
Yes.
Councillor Foster.
Yes.
And Councillor Jarrett.
Yes.
Okay, that passes in second reading, next is 20.015, an ordinance relative to metered parking on Pleasant Street.
Move approval for second reading, please.
Councillor Foster.
Thank you, I'm going to turn off my video due to my position right at a lot of adventures, and we are located directly in the block where this ordinance is being discussed.
Thank you. Okay, so a motion was made by Councillor Dwight.
Second.
Seconded by Councillor Nash. Discussion on second reading. Seeing none, roll call, please, Laura.
Councillor Mayory.
Yep.
Yes.
Councillor Nash.
Yes.
Councillor Quinlan.
Yes.
Councillor Shara.
Yes.
Councillor Thorpe.
Yes.
Councillor Dwight.
Yes.
Councillor Jarrett.
Yes.
And Councillor Labarge.
Yes.
Okay, that passes in second reading, and next is 20.115, an ordinance relative to parking on Middle Street.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councillor Labarge, seconded by Councillor Jarrett. Any discussion on second reading? Councillor Jarrett.
So I reached out to the owner of 10 Main Street, the medical building, who relayed the proposed changes to the tenants there, and haven't received any concerns back, so just wanted to mention that as I, when we did our first reading, I mentioned that I'd be doing that. So everything looks to be a go for it.
Thank you for checking in on that and for reporting back. Any other questions or comments? Okay, roll call, please, Laura.
Councillor Nash.
Yes.
Councillor Quinlan.
Yes.
Councillor Shara.
Yes.
Councillor Thorpe.
Yes.
Councillor Dwight.
Yes.
Councillor Foster.
Yes.
Councillor Jarrett.
Yes.
Councillor Labarge.
Yes.
And Councillor Mayory.
Yes.
Okay, that passes in second reading, and I know of no other business.
Turn your turn.
Okay, second that.
Motion's been made by Councillor Labarge, seconded by Councillor Dwight to adjourn. Roll call, please, on adjourning, Laura.
Councillor Quinlan.
Yes.
Councillor Shara.
Yes.
Councillor Thorpe.
Yes.
Councillor Dwight.
Yes.
Councillor Foster.
Yes.
Councillor Jarrett.
Yes.
Councillor Labarge.
Yes.
Councillor Mayory.
Yes.
And Councillor Nash.
Yes.
Okay, we are adjourned, thank you so much, everyone.
Bye, everybody.
Have a good evening, thank you.
Good night.
Night.
Good night.